The mayor wishes to report that he was five minutes late because he thought we were starting at 6:15. He obviously can't read his own agenda. So, do we want to re-roll call? Or you just want to punch me in? Huh? Oh, okay, yes. And we'll be excusing Councilmember Martin, who had a family emergency and has traveled back to Chile. We wish her all the best. Let's see, with regard to the closed session, we had no reportable actions. Someday, we're going to have something to report, honest, trust me. I just don't know what it is. And now, we don't have to do another roll call, do we? No? Everybody says no. Okay, life is good. In that case, we will move to our invocation. Brother John? If you'd rise, please.
Pray with me. God of all creation, we ask for your blessings on this gathering this night as we deliberate for the good of our city. Strengthen the bonds of friendship and peace with us, that we might lead our city into a prosperous future. This we pray in your holy name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one presentation made elsewhere, which was, on May 24th, a proclamation was mailed to Glen Newcombe proclaiming July, June 24th, as Kennedy Kids' Day in Lompoc, California, in honor of the band from Lompoc, which marched in President Kennedy's inauguration. And having now seen the video, he was just turning away when we tuned up, and he turned back and watched us come on. So, it was good. And now, something really good. We have two presentations for donations to the 2011 Fourth of July event from the Cellite Corporation and the Santa Maria Band of the Chumash Indians. And Dan, would you like to come up and say a couple of words? Oh, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, our audience, and our viewers at home. I'd like to share a little bit of history about our Fourth of July fireworks show and how we came to where we're at today. In May of 2009, the Lompoc City Council had to make some difficult budget decisions, with one being the elimination of the general fund dollars that supported the annual Fourth of July fireworks show. This longstanding tradition has been taking place in Lompoc for over 40 years. The disappointment throughout the community was high, but it did not take long for the community to prevail. Led by our local faith community, churches, individuals, and organizations band together to raise the necessary funds to support a Fourth of July celebration in 2009 for the Lompoc community. As the economy continued to impact our area, the sponsorship monies from organizations and businesses continued to fall short, and it looked as if 2010 would be the first year without a celebration in Lompoc. In 2010, one organization stepped up to save the show. Thanks to the generosity of the Santa Maria Band of Chumash Indians, the cost of the fireworks was covered, and Lompoc once again could celebrate as one family, and we are extremely grateful. This year, staff looked many different sources to help support the 2011 Fourth of July fireworks show, but to no avail. It looked quite bleak for the Lompoc community. In May of this year, the Seelight Corporation stepped up to challenge the community of Lompoc to dig deep. Seelight committed to matching dollar-for-dollar of community contributions, up to $10,000. Individuals such as Mayor Lynn and Councilmember Starbuck were the first to step up, contributing $100 each. In addition, individuals stopped by the Anderson Recreation Center with $25 check and another with a $20 bill. The hype was high, but it wasn't quite enough, and the date was growing closer. Then the phone rang. Our friends from the Santa Maria Band of Chumash Indians called to let us know that they would like to contribute $10,000 to this year's show. As you can imagine, our hearts were racing, and we were grinning ear to ear. Combining the commitment from the Santa Maria Band of Chumash Indians, the $10,000 match from Seelight, and the monies from the community, Lompoc would be able to celebrate America's birthday as one community. It is important to note that without such a celebration, families in our area would be forced to travel to other communities to experience fireworks of any type. Even the safe and sane fireworks permitted in surrounding communities are prohibited here in Lompoc. We, the community of Lompoc, are extremely grateful to the Seelight Corporation for establishing the community challenge for this year's show, and to the Santa Maria Band of Chumash Indians for supporting this great event last year and once again this year. Tonight, we have Bruce Coggan from Seelight, here as well as Gary Pace and David Dominguez, business committee members from the Santa Maria Band of Chumash Indians. And I'd like to invite you to the podium. All of you, come on up, don't be shy. Mr. Coggan, Mr. Pace, Mr. Dominguez. We would like to thank you for your support from the bottom of our hearts.
On behalf of the Santa Maria Chumash Indians, we are grateful to be part of this Fourth of July this year, and hopefully next. Thank you so very much. An honor.
You know, the only difficulty with this is, I don't think my pocket's big enough to put these in to carry to the bank. No, in all seriousness, you know, the most wonderful thing about the place we live is the people that live here and the effort that we all put into it. And when crises come along, someone steps up, and so, thank you so very much. Thank you.
I just want to say, it's an honor to be part of the community with our friends and neighbors from Santa Maria to here in Lompoc. We're all one big family, and we, you know, we hope we could commit more to the future. And, you know, in hard times, it's a great event to not have, so, thanks again.
Every so often, a little disaster strikes our town, particularly if you're a pizza eater. We had a disaster a couple of weeks ago. The oven at Miyamori Pizza decided to cook on its own. Would you say that was a fair description? And in the middle of the night, it tried to cook the entire restaurant. Fortunately, the suppression systems worked well, and all that happened was a large pile of scrap metal was created. And so, my purpose in bringing them up here is Tiffany and Ted are the owners, and my friend here is the manager, and they have a brand-new $30,000 oven that makes really amazing pizzas. So, if you've been in pizza withdrawal because you couldn't go to Miyamori and get your pizza, all the smoke has been taken out by the giant smoke evacuator, and the new oven is installed, and now we can all go back and have a pizza. So, congratulations on getting open really quick, and whoever your insurance company is, I think I want them to. Welcome back to productivity.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so very much. And I know it was tough, but hopefully everybody helped you and got her done quick. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank all the people that were involved. Serpo were the first ones there. Santa Maria Electric were there to get our lights back on, get our refrigeration back working. That way, we lost, like, no food. Ajax Refrigeration's there to do all of our electrical, or our air conditioning and getting our equipment back to working. Just want to thank them. Thank the city for, your inspector came out like three or four times, said, "Okay, we'll fix this little thing," and he came back the next day and fixed this little thing. And he really worked with us. It was amazing. The health department came in and said, you know, "Let's get you back on your feet," and they were amazing also. Just want to thank the city council for having us here tonight. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
And now, we have the city administrator's report.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, audience, and viewers, the city administrator's status report includes reports on three city projects: the Dick DeWes Community and Senior Center, the Lompoc Aquatic Center dehumidification project, and the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Ocean Avenue and R Street. Civil engineer Mike Luther is available tonight to give an oral report on these projects, and I would invite him up to the podium at this time.
Good evening. I'd like to start with the R Street project. Since the last update, Caltrans has approved the engineers' request for authorization to proceed with preliminary engineering. Request for qualifications went out, and we received five statements of qualifications, and the consultant selection process is currently underway. So, that should be finished in the next week or so. We should have more to report next month on who's been selected, hopefully maybe awarded. Moving on to the Lompoc Aquatic Center, I was hoping this would be my last report, but as, if you read the report, today was supposed to be the final construction day, and on May 31st, Smith Electric submitted a request for time extension. That request was under review, and since this was prepared, it was actually denied. So, today, a letter went out to Smith Electric informing them that they are currently out of contract days and subject to possible liquidity damages on the project. But the good news is that as of June 6th, Smith Electric began working night shifts to prevent any impact to the operations of the pool as far as recreation activity. And to date, other than the one shutdown, scheduled shutdown, there have been no interruptions to any activities at the pool.
I'm sorry, have they acquired the errant parts that weren't, seem to have caused this?
Currently, they are expecting, there's two pumps that are required. They circulate pool water and boiler water, and those currently are not scheduled to be delivered until mid-July.
And those are the only remaining items?
No, there's some other items also outstanding.
Thank you.
Just a little update, I know that Councilmember Starbuck had asked if they had found any additional corrosion. There was a contingency in there, and we didn't find any major corrosion, but the decision has been made to go ahead and use some of that contingency money, or, it's not really contingency money, but corrosion money, to repaint the slide structure that was not included in the original bid. And city staff do not feel they're qualified to, or have the equipment to go up and clean the rust that's on the slide structure, so we're going to utilize some of that funds to do some of that work at this time. It's not really a change order, it's actually included in the original contract value. If there's any other questions on the pool, I'd be happy to answer those.
How much have we spent on that original $200,000 for corrosion?
Well, it wasn't $200,000, there was $40,000. There was $20 for replacing additional parts, and there was $20,000 for painting that wasn't So, we're going to spend about $40,000.
What was the original amount for the corrosion that was, was kind of an open item?
There was two allowances in the contract, and it was for $40,000 total.
Okay, and so, these repairs are going to be within that?
Yes. So, moving on to the senior center. As of June 3rd, the steel trusses that we talked about at the last meeting, the change order that was outstanding, they were installed on June 3rd. So, currently, the project is moving forward where they're trying to close up the roof. I don't know if you've, I was out there today, there was the largest crew I've ever seen on the job site to date, so they're moving forward. As far as time extensions, we're currently evaluating the, what time, if any, I'm sure there will be time allowed to the contractor. I mean, the trusses obviously were a delay, it's just determining on what the delay is going to be. We've had, we have our CM doing an independent evaluation of the construction schedule from where they are right now to what, to where we think it'll take to finish the job, and the contractor is, part of his contract is required to prepare his own updated schedule to show the impact of the change order. And then, we'll evaluate that, and we'll come to a negotiation on how many days he'll be allowed extension.
Was there any substantial time impact for those cleats they had to build for the front, for the attachment?
The cleats?
Yeah, they had to build some brackets or cleats along that front wall, remember? That was the other, that was the other item that was a change?
Oh, that was the storefront?
Yeah.
No, there's no, that's not really a critical path item. It doesn't really affect any other items of work. During the last meeting, it was, I'll just read what I wrote here. The question was brought up regarding the change orders. The question is, what is the estimated cost difference between the contract change order versus the cost if the work would have been included in the original bid documents? As stated during the last update, this question is nearly impossible to answer with any certainty. The bid process is a particularly unpredictable one, with dozens of subcontractors phoning in prices at the last minute, and general contractors making guesses as to what their competition is doing, and making their own decisions on how much profit they are willing to sacrifice to win the award. With so many variables, many of which are not measurable, it is impossible to predict what the cost of a certain assembly might have been on bid day. When a contract change order is introduced, the project team is tasked with examining, examining the proposal in detail to make sure the scope is accurate and the cost for the said scope is reasonable and fair. Both the architect and the project construction manager have independently evaluated the contractor's proposal, and after negotiations, believe that the city is paying a reasonable and fair price for the work involved. To quantify a price difference between the price paid for the contract change order versus if the work were included in the original bid documents would be pure speculation on my part.
So, let me ask the question this way. What did they have to tear out to put it in, or did they just walk it in there and set it up in place?
Versus what was in the original bid? We had to cut holes in the roof that...
Would we have had to cut those holes in the roof regardless?
Yes, if you would have had the steel trusses originally in the bid, you would have had to cut holes in the roof.
So, the reality of it is that most of the work that we did now, we would have had to do then?
You would have had to do all the work, yeah.
Okay, so, we didn't build anything and then tear it back down to do this? So, chances are, the cost is fairly insignificant?
The cost difference, I mean, the cost itself is...
Well, yeah, but we would have, we would have had to do that anyway, had we received the appropriate information back when?
Yes.
Okay. And that guy that's hanging in the closet in there, was that that original consultant that said 5/8s deflection? Just kidding.
That's, that's the update. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you said you're working on a revised schedule, but you have an estimation, you know, right now, our completion date is scheduled for August 10th, I believe.
Yeah, that's the contract days currently. If I were to, I, there's going to be a significant...
I wouldn't hold you to a...
Increase.
I guess.
I would guess at least another two months.
Two months?
Yeah.
That's significant.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, the next one is... Hmm? No, there's a little one down here with my name on it. Oh, we got him out of order. Oh, no, we didn't. Okay, staff request an announcement, sorry.
Mayor and council, this next announcement is Fittersweet, Community Development Director, Arlene Pelster. After working for the city of Lompoc for 24 years, has accepted a position with the solving, city of solving, as the economic, economic development and planning director. And she'll be leaving us effective June 30th. So, on behalf of the mayor and city council members, Ms. Pelster, I'd like to invite In appreciation of your 24 years of service to the city of Lompoc, this is a certificate of appreciation for your years of service to the city of Lompoc, August 1st, 1987, to June 30th, 2011. And we wish you much success. I miss you.
Thank you.
You.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I might have to say something, huh? Thank you so much. It's been an honor and a privilege to work for the city of Lompoc for as long as I have. I basically grew up here. It's, the Lompoc family has always been there for each other, and I'm going to miss being part of that family. I appreciate all the opportunities for me to develop my career working for the city of Lompoc. I started here as a planning technician and was able to move to different and progressively responsible positions, and I, I appreciate the opportunity for growth that Lompoc does provide to its employees and the way you just treat us like family. So, I will miss all of you, however, I'm not going to be far, so if I can be of any assistance, please don't hesitate to call me, and thank you.
Thank you.
No. Okay. And now, Councilwoman... Here. Okay, I'm just going to tell you that I went to Fresno at 4:30 this morning to pick up some stuff for the Flower Festival, so if my tongue isn't all here, sorry. Recommendation regarding the redistricting proposed by the California Citizens Redistricting Committee and requested by almost everybody and city administrator?
Honorable Mayor and city council members, the State of California Citizens Redistricting Commission was established and selected by the California State Auditor in accordance with the Voters First Act passed by the people with the purpose to draw new redistricting maps for the House of Representatives, Senate, Assembly, and the Board of Equalization Districts. And these maps will be used for the next decade. So, as this effort relates to the district maps for Senate and Assembly districts, the commission's efforts to develop their initial draft redistricting map plan for the Santa Barbara County Districts, Santa Barbara County Cities, keeps all cities whole except for the city of Lompoc, which is split into two Senate and two Assembly districts, as shown on the screen. And this is a complement of Carol Benham and the Lompoc record. In response, Mayor Lynn and Councilmember Starbuck requested staff prepare a letter for the mayor's signature on behalf of the City of Lompoc City Council urging the State of California Citizens Redistricting Commission to keep all Santa Barbara County cities whole based on the important redistricting criteria of communities of interest defined as that which brings people together with shared interests and the ability of people to relate to one another's social, political, and economic interests. So, staff recommends council review the attached letter and authorize Mayor Lynn to sign on behalf of the Lompoc City Council requesting the California Citizens Redistricting Commission consider a redistricting plan in line with the communities of interest concept and make every attempt to keep Lompoc and other Santa Barbara County cities whole. And you can see in the right lower corner there, if you want to submit comments and get involved, there's an online address. And in case you can't read it, it is wedrawthelines.ca.gov/contact公文.html. And an email address, votersfirstact@crc.ca.gov. And then, tomorrow night is a public hearing held in Oxnard from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that is at the Oxnard College Performing Arts Building, 4,000 South Rose Avenue in Oxnard. And additionally, there are copies of the redistricting map on the table in the lobby, should anyone be interested in taking one of those maps. And this concludes staff's report. And at this time, I'll read, I'll turn the item over to Mayor Lynn. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Carol for bringing this to our attention, because frankly, I looked at the big map, the one on the left, and went, "Oh, well, that's kind of odd. We're clear out at the end of a district, but we're all in districts, so it should be okay." And she was hot on the case and said, "Hey, do you know we've been cut in half?" And I said, "No, I didn't feel the blade." But she did also supply to me, and I'm going to ask her to come up here and speak in a second, because she chatted with their public affairs person today, but she supplied the text of the discussion of Lompoc. And I want to read this to you, because it's pretty entertaining. "Mrs. Clark, Santa Maria, or Cut, Los Alamos, Santa Inez, Vandenberg Air Force Base, and just this northern area of Lompoc and Buellton, Lompoc is the only city split." Commissioner DeJulio. And what, it's a very small split, right? What's the population? Mrs. Clark. "The population of Lompoc is 41,000. This area is a correctional facility." That's my favorite part. Commissioner DeJulio. "Okay, I'm just wondering, on that eastern part where, what was it, Santa Inez and Buellton?" Mrs. Clark. "Yes." Commissioner DeJulio. "Is there any way to keep Lompoc whole and pick up some of Santa Inez into this southern district or not?" Mrs. Clark. "I'll look into it." Commissioner DeJulio. "Okay." Commissioner Baraba. "Did I hear you correctly that that part that's split is the correctional facility?" Keep looking at the map. Mrs. Clark. "And also, this north area of the city of Lompoc." Commissioner... Commissioner Baraba. Okay, thank you. Chairman Malloy. Commissioner Forbes? Commissioner Forbes. Yeah, again, the question would be, you know, what's the population variance? Because again, it's exactly the right population. The district to the south is short. So, it's whether we can shift population from Lompoc. Some of you are moving to Buellton. It may be on the wrong side of the line, but if you can move a few thousand people south and help balance everything off, I don't know if that would be, would do any good. Mrs. Clark. Okay, I believe there's also, just as a point, I believe there is a COI testimony about the area of San Diego and Buellton wanting to be with Santa Maria and Orkut. Commissioner DeJulio. Yeah, because everything north of Galida, really, there isn't much. Mrs. Clark. Right. Commissioner DeJulio. Yeah. Commissioner Malloy. Any other questions, direction from the commission? Commissioner Yao? Commissioner Yao. Just a comment. Splitting a correctional facility is probably a pretty good way of doing it because no one would care. Mrs. McDonald. Do you mean splitting the correctional? Commissioner Yao. For population, for population, yeah. Mrs. McDonald. But splitting, you mean outside, not in the middle? Commissioner Yao. In the middle. Chairperson Malloy. Can you clarify that direction? Commissioner Yao. I'm suggesting that if you had to split something, split the correctional facility, you know, instead of cities, because no one really, no one, no one are really impacted by the decision. Chairperson Malloy. It's, I think the one qualifier I would add to that is dependent, depending on which direction you are going to split, there's actually a very strong economic tie between wherever the home city of the facility is and the facility itself. So, we would probably want to respect that unless we had no other option. Mrs. Clark. The split would impact 3,500 people total, so I don't know if it's going to have a population there. It goes on. But I think you get the point. I think they were very confused about Lompoc. Either that, or we're all prisoners. There are only 3,500 of us, and I don't know. Anyway. So, after reading this, I was concerned that they didn't understand, number one, that we're a valley and that everyone within the valley is, is part and parcel, and not just perhaps the city, but Vandenberg Village and Mission Hills and in fact, the Air Force Base. And that and the prison, yeah. Even though they don't vote and we can split them out. That we needed to make a rather strong statement that we don't want to be chopped up in little pieces. Carol, would you like to share with us what the public relations person said to you that I thought was somewhat interesting?
Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. Good evening, our real mayor and city council members. First, I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda. I want to just emphasize that these districts will last for 10 years. As Laurel said, this is the first process for the Citizens Redistricting Commission. It came about because of two ballot initiatives. I'm quite sure it's hard to carve up the state of California into 40 pieces or 80 pieces, but there, something tells me we could do a little better job than splitting the City of Lompoc in half. So, again, I thank you for putting this on the agenda. I want to talk a little bit about the numbers. Each state Assembly district will represent about 460,000 people. So, the City of Lompoc would represent about a tenth. If the City of Lompoc was kept intact and in the same district as the base, Vandenberg Village, Mission Hills, Mesa Oaks, it would represent more than a tenth. With the split that is proposed, we will represent 1/20th of an assembly person's district. That's the difference. In this case, two 1/20ths don't equal 1/10th. For the Senate, the numbers are similar. For the Senate, Lompoc represents about a twentieth. With the split, we'll become 1/40th of a senator's constituency, which is tantamount to making us like an asterisk. Yes, includes a little piece of Lompoc. I do want to share, I saw some of people in the audience writing down the, the instructions on how you can, or suggestions on how you can contact the Citizens Redistricting Commission. This exact, exact map is out on the table, so please pick it up on your way out. The Citizens Redistricting Commission plans to have its second draft out by July 1st. It's very important that we act now so they hear our comments and hear our concerns by July 1st. It'll be harder to make this change if we're still split in the second draft. Forgive me, John, I'm blanking on what it is that
Could you comment on what the press representative said to you today, or yesterday, when you talked to him about economic and this and that?
Well, I think I, are you talking about the reference in the Santa Barbara news press that there was a hearing here in Lompoc, which there was not a hearing here in Lompoc?
You said when you talked to the press attache or whoever it is for the Redistricting Committee, that they were trying to put this off a little bit on economics and this and that.
I, I didn't talk to the press representative.
Oh, okay.
They didn't return phone calls or emails, which is why I got online and spent a day trying to find a map that would actually show the split.
Someone else told me that, then. Sorry about that.
You may be confusing me.
I've gotten a lot of phone calls on this. Can you imagine that?
So, I would just like to urge those listening at home and here in the audience to take a look at this. And if you have a problem with Lompoc being split, its influence being diluted for the next 10 years, please email. There's an online form that you can fill out. And if you can all, if you can at all, make it to the hearing tomorrow night in Oxnard. That's the closest this commission will come to Lompoc. This is our opportunity to change this. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the council's reference, Councilmember Costa will carry our letter to that meeting. I unfortunately have a whole lot of Flower Festival commitments, but if any other member of the council wanted to go along and raise holy you-know-what, I'm sure she would appreciate the assistance. And everyone in the community that has the ability to go down there and speak, it is very important they react to things in, in person. I guess I'm happy with the letter, except that I would like to get something in there that says we're not, that there seems to be some misunderstanding in the original discussion that the commission had with regard to Lompoc and the correctional facility and those sort of things. Yeah, I'm just putting my five cents in. Is there any other comment from the council before we have public comment? Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this?
Council Dwayne Homsdahl, City of Lompoc. I'm real pleased to see this happening. I'm going to be down there tomorrow also. But the one thing that I haven't heard anybody talk about is the Sufis Royal District. And they're trying to do the same thing that Lompoc has split it in half. There's several, Joni Gray has it all in one, but there's several from South County are trying to split Lompoc, too. When they had the meeting here in Lompoc on that, there was only four people in here. Nobody from the city was there. So, that's why I think if we're going to do this, we need the same letter heading for the Board of Supervisors. We don't need to be split. It's got to be all one community. And I think I'm real pleased to see the council getting involved in this, and I will be down there tomorrow. But you do realize that there's a supervisor split coming on. And Joni Gray does have, Supervisor Gray has an excellent one that leaves Lompoc as a whole.
Okay, let me, with regard to the, the meeting for the county redistricting, and I'll just cover that briefly, that actually occurred on a day when I was sitting here in City Hall. When the county booked the use of the room, they didn't tell anyone in the entire city why they were booking the room. And so consequently, I didn't walk from over there to over here. As a result of that, we had a discussion, and the city administrator called and spoke to the county administrator, and we had another discussion set, but I think that got moved three times because of budgets. And I think the next one is July 7th, but don't hold me to that. I don't have the email with me. So, we will be meeting with them again. And the other thing that I found disconcerting personally was that of all of the redistricting public meetings that were held, ours was the only one held during the day. All the others were held in the evening. And largely, we're a commuter town. So, as Councilmember Martner would, just points out, we want to do these things when people are here and can participate. So, anyway, we're moving down that road, and that will be coming back before the council again. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I just wanted to clarify something. I attended all but one of the redistricting meetings. And there was one during the day, and the Santa Barbara meeting was during the day. It was in the morning, actually, at the Board of Supervisors. And it wasn't just Lompoc that was sparsely attended. Countywide, I think the biggest group was in solving, and there was about, at the most, 40 people. But most of the, most of the hearings had five, six, seven people attended. But I would like to say, I thought the county did an excellent job in noticing those meetings. I mean, I saw notices everywhere, and they televised all of them. So, people had the opportunity to watch it on TV, and I think you can still get it. And every one of the meetings was translated as well. So, they really made an effort to reach out to the community and, you know, have as many people participate as possible. And I was very disappointed that so few people did.
Do, do you know where it was noticed here? Because I, I checked with both the Lompoc Record and the news press, and they had carried it, but it was clear back in April.
Well, that might have been, I, when I see things, I put them in my book, so I don't remember when it was. But I saw a number of notices, not just for the Lompoc one, but, but throughout the county. And there were elected officials that, from different cities, that would walk in or come for a little bit. And some of this, actually, I thought from here, maybe one or two staff people popped in and out. But, but I actually thought they did a good job this time. I was, and I, and I usually criticize that, that they don't do a good enough job. But I think there was really ample notification on this, on all of them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? On this? Took the wind out of his sails. Okay. And seeing no one rise, we'll close that and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I, I think Councilmember Starbuck and Mary Lynn got there before me, but I was definitely on your coattails when Ms. Benham sent us this email. You know, we were all really in unison that something needed to be done. What I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank Carol as well. Thank you very much for your hard work. I wanted to mention, and City Administrator Barcelona, please correct me if I'm wrong, the county sent a letter in regards to this issue, and they cited to us the cost, that it was going, that we were actually going to be receiving, or it was going to be an increased cost if this was the case, if Lompoc was split into two different districts.
Councilmember Costa, you're absolutely correct. The county clerk sent an email to City Clerk Stacy Alvarez and indicated that with the Senate and Assembly district splits, there will be an increased cost to the county election.
Okay. And so, again, that just shows, you know, that even on the county level, they're recognizing that this is, is a serious issue that needs to be addressed. But as far as the letter is concerned, I think it's good that we're focusing on the idea of keeping cities whole. But I'm curious if we should also include the fact that it would be an increased cost. And also, if we need to have a short sentence or two on what Ms. Benham was speaking of, which is, you know, the limitation of the citizens as a whole and their voice. So, what you're doing, as you mentioned, you know, splitting it in half. And that is limiting, you know, the citizens' collective bargaining to their representative. And so, you know, it's not necessarily equitable, fair, or commonsensical to be making that split and using some terminology in those regards, I thought might be helpful in the letter as well, just expounding on some of what's already there. Thank you.
Just a thought, City Administrator, could we perhaps do two letters, one from your perspective, talking about the cost or with regard to that, and cite what the county has said, and we get, we can get two, two swings at them for that?
That is council's pleasure. Otherwise, I can incorporate these points into one letter.
I think I'd like to have two licks at them personally, and take on the public side licks, and then take on the financial issue as a separate one. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. First, a, just for clarification, the redistricting meeting for the county is actually going to be on July 8th at 2:30 p.m. So, if anyone wants to attend that. The other thing is, I agree with Councilmember Costa that the information that Ms. Benham provided was extremely important for the representation of Lompoc. I was going to bring up, and she took all the wind out of my sails, I was going to bring up, that several people have come to me and said, well, Bob, isn't it better to have two senators representing you? You, you call your senator and say, I'm from Lompoc. You're calling Senator A, and you can call Senator B and have, tell them that you're from Lompoc. Have two senators. But like you say, we're like a, a drop in the ocean when we're split up like that. Either, neither one of the senators may even want to pay attention to us. So, Ms. Benham, that was great information. I believe that that should be included in the letter. Whether it's included in a separate letter or the letter that we're sending, I, I prefer to just have one letter with more meat, is what I'd like to see. But that's the wish of the council. So, thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm going to agree with Councilmember Lingle. Because the increased cost portion is maybe a few sentences is really what you could send them. You could probably get a paragraph. Instead of having a short letter with one paragraph, I'd prefer to have it all in one comprehensive letter. And it sounds like Councilmember Lingle will also be in attendance tomorrow evening. I just wanted to make sure that, so then that's even better. Both of us will be there. And please let me know if anybody would like to carpool. Just want to mention that as well. Oh, Councilmember Starbuck would like to go as well.
Well, since I, yeah, since I don't get a letter to carry, I will go down with you. But I did want to mention that, you know, we only get two minutes apiece, if I'm not mistaken, down there on public comment. So, as important as public comment is to us up here, there's at least six minutes worth of us going here. So.
Without violating the Brown Act, could the three of them meet and divide up the topics to go discuss?
Yes, they can, because it's a public meeting that's not set by the city. So, yes, that can happen.
Okay, you guys can actually talk to each other.
No, they can make, they can make comments during the public session. They can't talk to each other. They can make comments at the public session, comments to the group. They can't sit in a corner and talk to each other about the issue.
No, my question was, can they sit here after this meeting and say, okay, I'll do this topic and this topic, and you do this topic and this topic, and divide the topics up?
No.
Okay, so, we should do that right now, then, right?
If you feel the need to have it done, yes.
Yes. If we only have two minutes each, then we should have a topic division. I don't know who's first. Councilmember
I think we'll figure it out. I'm just more concerned about if we all rode down there together, then. We can't do that, then.
Yes, you can.
We just can't talk.
As long as we can talk about the issue.
Right.
Right. Silent.
You can talk about things that aren't within your jurisdiction. Can't talk about Can't talk about city business.
Well, this is not within our jurisdiction, is it? It is within our jurisdiction, sort of, kind of. So surfing, yeah, okay, got it. Okay, so let's, yeah, Councilmember Lingel, why don't you lead the discussion on dividing topics?
We can do that, but to solve the issue, Councilmember Costa and Councilmember Starbuck can ride together, since I'm going to be picking my wife up on my way down there. She's going to be attending the meeting as well. So the two of you can drive. I will drive separately and pick my wife up. Okay. I would like to, I'm going to get the information from Ms. Benham. I'd like to bring up the dilution of the, of the power, the people power here in Lompoke. So I'd like to take on that topic. I think that's extremely important.
Councilmember Costa, your turn to pick.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'll just do what's already there, which is going to be the idea that communities of interest concept and keeping cities whole. I'll, I'll use that piece. So then I think that leaves Councilmember Starbuck with the cost issue.
That and a recap. The cost issue, really, like, small, but it's keeping cities whole. As a council member, I feel that's really important.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So that will work well for me. We haven't seen the finalized letter, because obviously, we're going to need to make some additions to that. But, you know, if you could keep, keep it in that order. So we'll keep the communities of interest concept and keeping cities whole first, then we'll go into the dilution, or what was the, I'm sorry, what was the terminology you used?
Dilution.
Dilution? Right, of, you know, community bargaining, essentially. And then the issue of increased costs, and we'll just do it that way, if that works for everybody.
Yeah, and I, unless you guys are opposed, I would like to have a little, a couple sentences in there that basically say, "We think you misunderstood our city based on the testimony copy attached." Because I'm pretty sure that they didn't understand what was going on, and, you know, and I, I'm not being critical, because I surely would not want the job of dividing the state of California three different times, three different ways, for three different purposes. I think they've taken on quite a bit, and we should be very nice to them, so. Everybody good with that? Okay, and Councilmember Lingel.
Mr. Mayor, actually, two minutes is a long time. I think as long as the three of us get those individual points in, two minutes, we can actually cover quite a bit of material. So as long as we don't go over the two minutes, I may cover some of what Councilmember Starbuck and Councilmember Costa are going to cover. If they hear it two or three times, it actually will be beneficial. So we'll try to get as many points as we can, but we'll just make sure that we individually do cover those individual points, so.
And can we provide enough copies of the letter so that you have the ability to pass them out? Okay. All right. We don't, do we need a motion for that? No, okay. Yeah, any other questions or discussion on this? Nope, okay. The next one is kind of a recap from, on the California Space Authority. And so let's back up just a bit. A couple days before the, the announcement hit the public, the folks from the CSA called me and said, "Hey, can you run by?" And so I was in Santa Maria, and I stopped by, and they said, "We're going to go out of business today. No, we're going to go out of business on Friday," and this was on a Wednesday. "And we'd like to give you our database, and so here's the magic code. And we have these files that we think would be helpful for you. And the board's already decided, and it's a done deal, and we turn the lights out on Friday." And so we, I was personally very sorry to see that happen. However, I sincerely appreciate the fact that they gave us literally all the work that they had done, that they had spent a great deal of money on. And then even better, both Andrea and Janice offered their future help with, with the project, if we wanted to carry it forward. And I said, "Well, I need to go, come, come back and talk to the council." I, from my standpoint, I'd at least want to investigate what we can do. Since then, I have been contacted by a large number of individuals who were formerly involved in the project, included the architect, the owner of the architectural firm in Santa Maria, who's actually in Redondo Beach, who traveled to Lompoke to come and sit with me with his folks and say, "Hey, you know, I put about $200,000 worth of my own time in this at no charge, because I believe this is a great program." And, and I didn't really understand his portion of it. But his firm is a school architect, and they do about forty school districts in California. And he had gone out in, along the way, and talked to the schools about a fifth-grade science camp. And so part of the program that I was not even aware of was to have forty-four weeks of fifth-grade science camp, and a thousand kids a week come to Lompoke and go through a five-day science program. And that's what he was, said, you know, "I'll, I'll do whatever it takes. I want to be involved in that." And then I was contacted by one of the developers who had indicated he'd put a hundred grand into the deal, it looked like it was going to go forward, and said, "I'm still in." I was contacted a couple hours ago by Jim McLaughlin of Quintron in Santa Maria, saying he would like to still be involved, and a number of other people. And I, I didn't bring the whole file with me, but they, they all said, "Hey, don't, you know, don't let this go away. Let's talk about it." As this progressed along the way, I have an advisor who's, I can't say developer, because I'd say entitlementer, he helps people bring projects together. And one of my questions to him back along the way was, "Hey, will this thing pencil out? Can this actually be done? And if it can be done, how much government money does it take to get it done?" And depending on the answers to some questions, then the amounts were different. So after this kind of didn't go out very well, I said to him, I said, "Okay, now, you know, we have, we have CSA's information, but in a sense, we have a blank slate. What do you see as, you know, given your ability and what you do, how would you start out on this?" And he said, the first thing he said was, "CSA's plan was largely driven by government funding, grants and loans and that sort of thing. And that was a reality of 2003, 4, 5, 6, 7. But it's not the reality of today. The reality of today is, you need to plan a project that's market-driven, and that can be done through, through a self-sustaining mode, and through some level of donations, and through some minor level of, of government funding." And then I said, "Okay, well, that's all good information." And, and then I talked to the planning consultant that the CSA had hired, Thomas Fig, and he basically recapped the same thing to me, that, you know, that that business model that would have worked four or five years ago doesn't work now. And he said, "Well, one of the decisions that you're ultimately going to have to make is, do you want a government model where you have a government entity of some type that organizes and puts this thing together? Do you want a private sector model where it's all done by some private sector organization? Or do you want a hybrid model where you have two groups working together, much as we did with the exclusive negotiating agreement? Or do you want to do nothing? Because that's, that's always the alternative, is just let it go and go on down the road." I don't have anywhere near enough information so that I could make any recommendation on anything, other than there are an awful lot of people who would like to see this go forward. I believe that it has a large potential economic gain for the community based on the studies that CSA did. And I believe what this council needs to do is to agendize it in the near future, probably at the next meeting, for just a preliminary discussion, and start collecting information so that we can determine how we would want to go forward. And that's what I know. And I would answer any questions. Councilmember Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At one of the prior council meetings, we as a council approved, I believe, as an $18,000 consulting contract for someone to come in and validate the CSA pro forma. Have we proceeded with that, or? Okay. When we do agendize this, or maybe I do it now, if we even think that this is going to be a possibility, I don't want to, I don't want to put a lot of money into this. It certainly isn't going to be financed by the city. But if we think that there is still possibility, I think we need to talk about going ahead with this validation of the pro forma, because if we come back, or if the consultant comes back and says that the pro forma is a bunch of hooey, that's, yeah, you know, you know what that is. Then, then it's an end of a discussion. But at, as I stated in the previous meeting, $18,000 is a lot of money, but when you're talking about this type of investment in the future of Lompoke, it's not a lot. So I'd like to see us discuss this $18,000 and possibly go forward with the pro forma to see where we're going.
City Attorney.
Just through the mayor, what the, the $11,000 contract that you previously had, or still have, although it won't have anything to review, was to review a pro forma that was prepared. So there is no pro forma at the present time, and the group that was going to prepare the pro forma isn't in existence anymore. So I'm not sure what.
I think what the council member might be saying is that if we get another group and we move this forward, we want to go through the same process. We want to have someone like that to validate what comes to us.
Well, that really wasn't what I was saying.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood you.
No, that isn't what I was saying. And if, if I'm wrong, the city attorney, if you are correct, which I'm sure you are, so there never was a pro forma that was submitted to us.
Correct. One of the, one of the steps in the ENA was to get the pro forma from CSA.
Okay. Then, then there's no pro forma to evaluate, and it's, it is a dead point then at this.
Well, only in, inasmuch as at some point, we're going to have something come to us, and I believe that the process that we looked at before is the correct process, once we get a little further down the road. Actually, what I'm looking for here this evening is consensus among the council to have this as an agendized item, and start looking at alternatives and having some discussion on it. And that's really all I'm after tonight. I don't want to, you know, I, I, the phrase is, "Don't get ahead of the council," so I'm trying not to get ahead.
Let's, let's get public comment first on this, and then we'll bring it back to council.
Okay. Anyone out there that would like to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll come back to council. And, oh. You were a little slow on the getup. Come on down.
All I have to say is, my name's Wendy Thompson, and the only reason I'm here tonight is to show my support for pursuing this.
Thank you.
I had done a story on it once when I was in journalism, and I saw I might have studied it a little more than some, but not as much as you. And I just think that also, in the light of the fact that people think Lompoke is a correctional facility, and apparently, no one runs it but inmates, because, you know, apparently, they thought that not, not many people there could vote either, I mean, other than inmates, anyway. But that's another subject. But I think, you know, anything we can do to let people know that Lompoke is very well alive and has some very fascinating, important California items here, I think we should look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Toni Ostini. I've followed this almost from the beginning, and I definitely think it's worthy of further investigation. There's so much more to this, and I think it could put Lompoke on the map. The only facility even close to this is in Florida. And I think that this would, if you want to talk about building tourism and people coming into our city, not only with the fifth-grade education curriculum to be added, if our state ever gets healthy enough to do that, would also be the government agency and contractors that would be coming on, the museum. There was so much more, the viewing, the eventing center, and such, that it was going to be a huge boon. And this incorporated quite a few of the contractors that are on base right now, that have been part of this, from Raytheon, Northrop, et cetera. So, I mean, this is so much greater than just strictly a facility for fifth grade for, it's going to be a complete complex that would put us on the map. It's definitely worth whatever funds you can drum up to investigate further, at least, to see if it's worthy. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going?
Mary Saladino, a citizen of Lompoke. I just want to make a comment while observing what you're talking about. It seems to me like there are groups that are trying to make Lompoke recognized as just a low-life correctional facility, community. And here's an opportunity to make it more. I don't know how you would do it, but let's keep our community something we are very proud of, and show others that we can be proud of it as well. I'm sure it would be a hard task to take care of, but don't let this go. Another comment that was made to me has nothing to do with this situation, but they said, "Years and years ago, the rodeo was here in Lompoke, and the city let it go, and now it's somewhere else in another city nearby." And that has happened, happened often through the years, that that other city nearby takes things that get started here. Not that we don't like the other city, but I think we have to fight to keep what we want to show our, what we can show our pride in. So, good luck.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Sheldon Green, citizen of Lompoke. This task that faces you with this space museum is monumental. There's no question about that. I recall, though, in somewhere around 1964, they said, "We couldn't go to the moon either," and we did it. I think it, it, it's a monumental task. There's no denying that. But I don't know who of you in here has had the opportunity to visit the Space Museum and Visitor Center at the Cape. Good for you, Mayor. It is pretty spectacular, and it gets a tremendous amount of tourists. And I visualize you would have the same thing here. I think the advantage to Lompoke is undeniably huge. How you're going to manage this, I don't know, but I think you're, you're on the right track. At least you're, you're taking a try at it. And who knows? You may land on the moon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going? Going? Gone. Okay. Let me just recap, because I probably didn't do a very good job on that. This project is composed, or was composed, of a viewing area, because from up near the flagpole, as Councilmember Starbuck will attest, you can see a launch from Space Launch Complex III and IV. The educational component, the technology park, the museum component, the fifth-grade education, the college education, mentoring, and an amphitheater, and, I mean, it, it has a huge number of components as it was originally conceived. So there are, there are a lot. And the visitor and tourism study that was done was actually done by Delaware North, who is the company that operates the Cape. And their projection was 200,000 visitors in the early stages per year, and 500,000 in the later stages. So there's, there's a large potential. There's no question about it. So I'm looking for a, I want to, I want to agendize this, and I'm looking for a second and a third. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Oddly enough, in college at UCLA, if I wasn't going to be a political science major, I was looking at being an astrophysicist. Took me until my third year till I had to decide I want to be a political science major. As a political science major, then this is how I'm saying this. I want you to understand that I value this project, and I think that this is a wonderful idea, and it could be a great thing for Lompoke. However, it's a $200 million project. The only reason the city was involved in the first place was because of the property. The city should not, in my opinion, fund a program, should not operate a program, should not build such a, a, a grand center. If there's a nonprofit or another organization in this community that has the capability, the money, the time, the energy to do this, I beg you to come to this community, and we will help you through as we were going to help CSA. But let's remember, CSA, this is an organization that was working on this for upwards of nine years. They were unable to get $5 million in federal funding. That's part of the reason why they dissolved as a nonprofit. That's part of the reason why they dissolved as a nonprofit. So I'm just saying that there are many, many issues to consider here, and agendizing it, I'm not sure, to me, that seems a little premature. If I have an organization come up, if all of these folks who are interested decide to come together and build a 501(c)(3) together and come up to me, I would be more than happy to listen to that. But at this point, I feel like there is no pro forma, there is no project, there is no nonprofit that has this project that's going forward. So unfortunately, I won't second or third that.
Okay.
Just because I think it's premature. Thank you.
Well, I guess my point is that I wouldn't even be able to talk to anybody about this until we got to that point. So my goal in having another discussion is to be able to bring people in, let them talk to it, and have a little open discussion. That's kind of where I'm trying to get to. I'm not trying to make a decision. I'm not trying to do anything. I just want to have an opportunity to have a thought-sharing process, that's all.
Well, if it's, Mr. Mayor, if I could really quickly, until it's at a certain point where they're speaking of city business, it is okay for you to go, for him to speak to folks who are interested in projects. But if you're not in the official capacity as the city, which you wouldn't be until they were at the step of actually going forward with a project, I'm not even sure why you would need that discussion at this level.
Okay. Here's kind of the issue. We had closed sessions in which I was given some very particular instructions about what I could and couldn't do.
In regards to negotiations with the California Space Authority?
Yes. However, comma. I wouldn't be able to digress from those instructions until I received some altered instructions, and hence my goal for having a discussion.
I'm, okay, I trust that that's the truth. I'm having a little bit of confusion in regards to that, though, but if you need the discussion, that's okay. I don't think that the project's moving forward anytime soon, and if they're, you know, that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Off to the right. Which one of you guys got there first? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it kind of clear that I don't think that this is going to be, should be, or ever will be, a government or City of Lompoc project, but I would be willing, as a council member, to support and review, just like we did CSA when they came in.
Yep. That's the goal.
And by the way, the old rodeos they used to have at the rodeo ground, they used to have Model T races up there, too. And I understand there's a little group of people getting ready to do some racing here, so we're not giving everything away.
Okay. So do I take that as a second?
You are.
Yes, I'm trying to get this on the agenda. That's what I need to do to be able to move forward. It's all I want in life.
Mr. Mayor, are you recognizing me?
Yes.
Okay.
You're Bob Lingle, and I've known you for many years.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I agree with Councilmember Costa that this should never be a city project, and I don't think that's what you're trying to make it. I believe you're just trying to further discussion, further the discussion. Because we do not have money to fund it, talk is cheap, and that's why I will be seconding your thing, just to bring it back for further discussion. And in all due respect, this, I hope this person isn't offended, but a comment in the newspaper was something to this effect, I'll paraphrase it. If all the powerful individuals that started this project failed, what makes us think that this relatively young, I think she meant new, because it isn't young, council could do it? My answer to that is probably because we don't know we can't do it, and that's what we're going to try and find out. So to this individual, no disrespect, I just, that caught my attention. So I will second it, just bring it back for further discussion, but I also want to agree with Councilmember Costa and Starbuck that this will, probably will never be a city-funded project.
I personally think it's very unlikely we would or could or should do this. In the perfect world, I'd walk in here and say, hey, you know, I think I could go get you a nonprofit group that would come forward with this and would do kind of the same thing that we did with the CSA. What do you guys think about that? But I'm not allowed to ask that question because we can't make a decision because we haven't agendized it yet. So, anybody want to do a third?
I'll go ahead and third it for discussion.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. Moving right along. Oral communication, a maximum of five minutes to discuss anything you want to discuss that's not on the agenda. And here he comes.
Glad you made it. I'm Bob Manning. I'm a former chair of the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce, currently on the Board of Directors. Mr. Mayor, lady, and gentleman of the council and city administrator, my comments are relative to the discussion that was held in the last meeting. I found some of the comments erroneous, and I wanted to correct them, or clarify them, depending on the situation. First of all, we need to clarify how the contract is negotiated. Now Laurel knows this. Contracts negotiated between staff and the Lompoc Chamber staff. If this council wants something in a contract, they need to instruct staff. Then it becomes part of the negotiation. A lot of discussion went on in the last meeting about what should have, could have, would have been done, but it never got to staff to get done, to my knowledge, because our two staffs negotiated in good faith. So it came down to a good contract, from my perspective. So the contracts, also, a comment was made that we're the highest-paid chamber in the area. So we went out and did a little bit of homework. Solvang has a contract with their Conference and Visitor Bureau funded at $410,000 a year. They're giving a $50,000 addendum this year because they're celebrating their centennial. Ullton has a contract with the city for their visitor bureau. It's based on the TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax, and it's at 10%. They don't have a lot of history, so that you can't get a lot of averages out of them. Santa Maria is funded by TOT percentage. It's kind of a complicated formula, but that's where it comes from. Last year, it was about a half million bucks. They also fund the convention, the Economic Development Commission, at $113,000 a year. So they've got $613,000 in visitors and economic development. Pacerobles is at about $60,000 a year. So as you can see, we're not the highest-funded by a long shot. Now, one thing that I wanted to point out is some places have two entities, like Solvang has two different entities. One is the Visitor Bureau, and one is the Chamber of Commerce. The Visitor Bureau in Solvang is funded. Chamber of Commerce has nothing to do with that. Okay? A lot of them are like we are, where both entities are under one administrative umbrella, and that's the way we operate, and pretty much has been. And that's the way this contract was developed over the years. I mean, I was president in '89, '90, I think it was, and I can recall going through the discussion at that point about tourism and how we can enhance tourism, and that's what it was all about, and it still is. One other inaccuracy I wanted to correct. It was stated that all the phone calls are fielded by volunteers. Not true. Staff fields every phone call. If it occurs before hours or after hours, it goes to voicemail, and they field it the very next business day. So I'd invite the council, you want to see what really happens at the chamber? Go spend a day with the staff. They'd welcome you to come, and you're going to be amazed what happens there. And you're going to be amazed how much business gets done. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any else who wanted to speak in oral communications? Come on, you guys.
Mayor, Council, Duane Holmdahl, I just got a couple of quick ones. One is that I hope you know, but tonight they are setting the bids, they collected the bids on the Safety Center. It came in $7 million under what they expected. They, and they were four tight bids, so, and they expect to break ground sometime in the next two months. So we talk about something coming to Lompoc is going to be a big boom, and they hope their plans are to be open in 2012. So that's coming down the road, so that's something we need to look at, also how we're going to utilize those facilities. The other thing is this Saturday, of course, we had our Triducan pizza party, and it looks like we'll be here in about two weeks, or the next council meeting, with the check for the, and it turned out a success. Mother Nature helped, of course, when you have a nice, warm day, and the wine was good. I know this young lady had poured a lot of wine, and another councilman drank a lot of wine, but his wife drove him home. I won't say who it is. So, I mean, it worked out real good, but just keep in your back of your mind that as you advertise Lompoc, this Safety Center is going to be a major influx of people from all of the United States. And, you know, we always have trouble outside of the area talking about the president. That's been going on for years, and it's outside the Santa Barbara and Santa Maria. Loves to dump that on Lompoc because they use that as a negative. They don't want to see a positive. The other thing is that when you get your letter done for tomorrow, is there a way we can get it or make sure? Some of us are going down it, so we don't say the same thing you do. We can add to it, but we'd like to have a copy of the letter. Either we can pick it up at, down there, or pick it up before we get there. Thank you.
City Administrator, what time would we be able to distribute that, do you think?
Should be ready by noon, and it can be available at the city clerk's.
Noon, Duane. At the city clerk's counter?
And they'll be, they'll bring copies along?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on down. Now, that's enthusiasm. He's running.
I just have a few questions. Apparently, the city budget passed, and so you did it without negotiating with all the unions and everything? So, okay, go ahead.
Actually, at the same meeting that we did the, passed the budget, we passed, we approved the contract with the firefighters, and the negotiations with the other two union groups are ongoing. We have a statutory deadline for passing a budget. We actually didn't have to pass it till the night, but we were feeling really good and efficient, and we got it done. A budget is kind of a guideline, and budgets are amended as things change. So we made our statutory deadline, and we don't even lose our paychecks if we don't, but we got it done. And then as those other facets come along, they, they're added in, if you will.
Is the city doing better this year than it was two years ago?
Yeah. We were doing really good up until CALPERs got us, the California Public Employees Retirement System, and that was really the cause of our stress in terms of having to make reductions to balance our budget. Is our income coming up? Yes, it's starting to come up, but not very rapidly, so it's just kind of working its way up a little.
Okay, I was just wondering, yeah, because you passed the budget there, and I just wondered if you did, why are you still putting the screws on us, the working people?
Well, in that budget were certain things that revolved around the union negotiations, so the answer is that's part of it.
And so if, say, the negotiations go on, from what I understand, that we're voting on the contract on Friday?
I don't know. And you're now getting to a part where I'm pretty sure I don't want to have a discussion.
I just wonder, because if we don't, it's getting, it's a take it or leave it thing, so.
I really, now you're way past what I know I can talk about, but I'd be happy to refer you to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, my suggestion is that the gentleman can have the gentleman say what he wants to say, and don't make any more comments.
Yeah. Told you you got me into that corner, didn't I?
All righty. I was just curious.
Yeah.
But the city is doing better, but the screws are still coming down on us.
You know I can't answer that question.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I just wanted to point out to Councilman Lingle that I'm familiar with that articulate quote, and it actually did say the new council, not the young council, so it was a misquote there. I wanted to bring an issue up that I was talking to some council people from other councils, and one of the things they do at their council meetings is when they discuss an issue, they discuss, the council brings, you know, you come to that agenda item, the council does their sort of general discussion of it, and then they open it up to public comment so that the public then has sort of an idea what the council's looking at, thinking, and, you know, because I know oftentimes, sitting in the audience, you get up and make a comment, and then it's closed, and then the council starts discussing it, and it brings other ideas up, or you want a clarification, or you want to give input. And so I'd just like to put that out for you to think about, because I think that's really a great way of democracy, because people, it's more of a give and take, and I think that it might work very well, so I just wanted to suggest that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment, and we'll come to the consent calendar. This evening for the consent calendar, we have the approval of the minutes from the Lompoc Council Special Workshop of May 3, 2011, and the May 9, 2011 Council Redevelopment Agency Regular Meeting of June 7. So we have three sets of minutes. We have a payroll voucher and two registers. I will not participate in check number 299106 to Speedy Lock &amp; Safe for $10.60. And then we have the acceptance of the annual financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2010, the adoption of ordinance number 157511, amending the city zoning ordinance, definition sections for signs allowed by permit in industrial zones. The initial document that was distributed had a type of graphical omission, omission, yeah, there we go, omission from instructions from the prior council meeting. So the item that was omitted was what we told staff to do, so that can continue to go forward. And then we have item 7, the Lompoc Valley Magazine reprint authorization. That one I'm going to ask to pull, because I need to just have a little discussion with that before I go too far down the road. Are there any other items someone would like to pull? Okay. Seeing no one's light come on, could we have a motion for acceptance of the consent calendar less item number 7? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I just have a question. During that public comment, did we get that gentleman's name? Did anybody, were we able to get that?
Yes.
Oh, we were? Okay, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you. I move that we accept the consent calendar, except for item number 7, which has been pulled for further discussion.
A second. It's been moved in second to accept the consent calendar, accept item 7. Is there any further discussion?
Just for the record, the ordinance is the one that's on your dais today, not the one that was in your packet?
When I spoke about item 6, the zoning ordinance changed. The one that we're adopting is the one that was in front of us, because the other one that was, the one that's in our book had the typo. Yeah, it's right here in front of you.
If you look at the ordinance that's in your packet, it's item 6, there were, the language and to businesses within the area wasn't deleted as you had directed, and so it's now deleted in the version that you have.
The one that's on the counter has the correction, the one that's on the dais had the correction. It's, it was like a one-word change that we, or two-word change that we requested at the last council meeting. So, okay. Are there any other questions regarding this? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four with one absent. Four, zero, with one absent. Okay. I just want to pick up item 7 really quick. I don't want to put it clear to the end, it's pretty simple. Do we have a policy in place that covers this?
Not that I'm aware of.
In your opinion, do we need a policy or should we just do this and go on with life?
I don't know if I'd use that characterization, but yes, do what you just said.
Okay. All right. I therefore move acceptance of item number seven, and I'd be seeking a second. Councilmember Costa?
I second.
Okay. And is there any further discussion on this? And for the benefit of the audience, this was a request by a former city employee to use public information that she had helped compose for magazine articles a long time ago. And I think just trying to do the right thing and go through and, yeah. So, who's first? Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on this. You know, I know that the redevelopment agency paid for this. I know that it was paid for on the taxpayers' dime, but I'm going to go ahead and vote a yes on this because I think it really is going to provide a betterment for Lompoc in the end anyhow.
Councilmember Lingle?
That was my comment as well. I mean, it's, this is information that's going to be going into a book. It's all, everything that's being requested is very positive about the city of Lompoc, very positive about our wine industry. I think by us approving this, we're going to get probably, who knows how much dollar value in advertisements. So I think it's a win-win for both sides on this.
Yeah, I have to agree. I think it's old information. If it can be recycled to the benefit of the community, we're better off. Any further discussion? And could we vote, please? That passes four, zero with one absent. And now we have an appointment to the Beautification Commission. One term ending December 2014. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I am nominating Donald Buck for the Beautification Commission.
Is Donald here this evening?
I did not request his attendance.
Okay. And I would accept a motion and a second for this, please. I think you'd like to move it, wouldn't you?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve Donald Buck to the Beautification Commission for a term ending December 2014. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes four, zero with one absent. Okay, now we're going to go on to item number nine, which is the consideration of ordering of services and improvements and levy of assessments for fiscal year 2010, I'm sorry, 2011, 2012 for the Lompoc Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District number 2002.01, and proposed adoption of resolution 5724/11, approving the engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering the levy of assessment for fiscal year 2011, 2012 for the Park Maintenance and Pool Assessment District 2002.01.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, those in our audience tonight and those viewing from home. Tonight, as mentioned, we are continuing the public hearing on the ordering of the services for the assessment district for fiscal year 2011, 12 for the city of Lompoc Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District number 2002.01. Staff's recommendation to council is to continue the public hearing that was opened at the council meeting of June 7 and to proceed continuation of the assessment for the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District number 2002.01 in order to receive any public input on the proposed continuation of the assessments, the proposed assessment budget for fiscal year 2011, 12, and the services and improvements the assessments fund, and any other issues related to the assessments. As well, after the close of the public hearing, consider ordering of the improvements and the maintenance of service and the levy of the assessments for fiscal year 2011, 12. Adopt resolution number 5724/11, approving the engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessments for fiscal year 2011, 12 for the Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District 2002-01. And with that said, the proposed assessments, just as a refresher, for fiscal year 2011, 12 are $24.30 per single-family equivalent benefit unit. And the total amount of revenues that would be generated by the assessments in fiscal year 2011, 12 will be approximately $282,609. This concludes my report. City staff is available to answer any questions.
Dan, you know, the one part I've had trouble with is the, we have the list of parks, which is on page eight, but then over on page 12, we have some parks that don't have anything listed. Do we have some that just don't have a project? Is that what that's down to?
That is correct. That list is pretty much a wish list. It's not specific. Pretty much, it's an opportunity for the engineer's report to reflect all of our properties, but not necessarily at any given time or at some time in the near, in the future, a project could be assigned.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's important for the public that we talk about the fact that this is a fragment of the funding for things. It's just one little piece. It doesn't, doesn't fund all the parks. But the Oversight Committee's report addresses all of the parks and all of the funding. Okay. Any councilmember have a question for Mr. McCaffrey? Nope? Okay. Now, I'd like to open this for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to discuss this item? Going, going, gone. Seeing no one rise, we'll come back to council. There is one philosophical question that has been asked of me, and that is, even though this increase is fairly small in nature, that there are people in our community who live on fixed incomes and another dollar, whatever it is, is some issue for some of them? And I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to that. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. And that actually ties in well to my question, which was, we have the ability to increase 3% per year, correct? Mr. McCaffrey?
That is correct. Up to 3% per the ballot measure that was put forth by the people.
Okay, however, for this year, the proposed increase was?
2.19%.
2.19%. Thank you. And so I think that part of council's consideration this evening is if we want to increase it at all, and if we do, if we want to maintain that 2.19%, or if we want to do a less amount than that, that's something I think for council to consider. But what I did want, if possible, Management Services Director Brad Wilkie to go over. He and I have talked about this in the past. Let me find the page. Page 13 of the SCI Consulting Group Engineer's Report. And Mr. Wilkie, if you could just briefly go over, you know, this budget, just in a general sense, so we could figure out, you know, where, how much money is really coming in and what that's being used for from this assessment?
Sure. The budget that is on page 11, 12 is a representation of several categories within the citywide budget for park projects. There's a couple for park operations, which are the Aquatics and Operations and the Park Lighting Safety Enhancement at the bottom. The main items that are funded specifically through the assessment are a portion of the Aquatic Center debt service, approximately $165,000. Down about the middle of the page, middle of the first section, is the Aquatic Center Equipment Replacement of $78,000, which is the equipment in the aquatic center that's being degraded by the corrosion that cannot be funded by the RDA because it's not fixed equipment. Approximately $25,000 of that 78 is proposed to be funded by this assessment. And then of the Park Lighting Safety Enhancement Maintenance, that is entirely funded by the assessment, the $63,560. In addition to those projects, specific items, the assessment administration charges, primarily the charges by the county for assessing the assessment, is included at approximately And that is, that comes directly out of the assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkie. If you, I'm sorry, could you go over that one more time? The assessment monies are going to the debt service of, how much was that?
The dollar amount is $165,755, $165,000.
The $24,000 going to the county for the administration to collect the assessment?
The county's primary one is also the payment for utilizing the engineer to do the administrative of the report itself.
And then if you could, and the $78,000 for the aquatic center?
A portion of the 78, about $25,000 of that, about a third. And then the $63,000 for the maintenance lighting enhancement at the bottom of that list.
That's the $63,560? So if in a case, council decided to collect less than the recommended 2.19%, where would the missing revenues be taken from?
Most likely out of the pool, replacement of the equipment at the pool.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Here's the mayor.
Yeah, but you had your light on first. Brad, 2.19% is like 40 cents. I don't have last year's figure. I didn't, I didn't pull that.
The prior figure is $23.78. So the 2.19% increase represents a 52 cent per parcel roughly increase.
Okay. I take it back. For 52 cents, we should just go ahead because we need to get it done. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you had, you mentioned again, or you sort of alluded to it, you know, we have individuals out there on a fixed income and, you know, we have to be concerned about this. And then Councilmember Costa, she had mentioned, you know, the idea of either lowering the amount or having no increases here. I think probably for the same reasons because it is an additional tax that we're putting towards our people. My comment to this is no one, especially us up here, do not want to increase any of your assessments or taxes. However, this is a little bit different because, well, taxes have to be voted on anyway, but this has already been voted on by the people years ago. They voted to fund this issue and they, at that time, agreed to a, up to a 3% increase on an annual basis. This year, fortunately, we're not going with the 3%, we're going with the 2.19%, which, again, isn't a lot of savings, but it's, it's something. But the idea is if we didn't do this, Councilmember Costa, you're right, the money would have to come from someplace else. And it'd probably come, it would have to be from reducing the maintenance on the pool, reducing the maintenance on some of our parks. And is it worth the 52 cents per parcel to not maintain our property out there? I don't think so, especially since the public has already voted to do this. So I will be supporting this miss, this agenda item.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm going to kind of mirror what Councilmember Lingle says. I don't like tax. I don't like assessment. But one thing that I want to call attention to, and I feel that this is very important that we bring it up now, is I understand that this pool is going to require some pretty extensive work in a few years in the regrouding ceiling of the pools. Is there any truth to this, Ms. Plummer? I've heard that probably five, seven years is going to be a basic reworking of these pools. And I know we're not going to have these pools paid off by then. So is there a plan with this assessment that we can go ahead and start stacking this money up for when this maintenance does need to be done?
There is ongoing maintenance that we do, preventive maintenance, but there are some larger capital maintenance items that will come up. One very expensive one is the replastering of the pools, and that happens approximately every 10 years. Our current estimates are about $100,000 to replaster all three pools. We have spoken with Mr. Wilkie about some ideas and actions to start saving. Part of the monies that we applied to this coming year's budget, the savings that we had from last fiscal year and this current fiscal year that we're applying to the next budget cycle, that was some of the thought processes, that we can start accruing some savings and from any of our, our cost-saving measures to apply for future larger expenditures when it comes to the aquatic center. So we are looking now for those expenses in the future.
You said three pools.
There are three pools over there. We have the competition pool, the recreation pool, and the therapy pool.
I'd accept a motion for this. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. The one other thing I wanted to bring up, and I brought this up when this was previously discussed at the last council meeting, which is that there's no sunset on this assessment, and that worries me. As a citizen, if I didn't know much about assessments, I definitely would have voted for this as well. However, I wish that there would have been a sunset where somebody can say, yes, I'm willing to pay this assessment for X amount of years, and after that, these programs, these parks, these pools should be self-sufficient, or should be able, if not self-sufficient, should be funded by the city. So I don't know if now's the time to discuss that. I don't know where exactly that comes in, but that shows a concern of mine in regards to this assessment. Thank you.
City Attorney, would that take an act, another vote to change that?
You mean another vote of the people?
Vote of the people, yeah.
You could handle it that way, but the council also could have, make your own determination to have this assessment terminate at some point in the future.
All right. Councilmember Lingle?
I'll make a motion to, to approve this. However, I'd just like to comment on Councilmember Costa's comment. Yes, that was a concern, and I actually voted against this measure when it came up. Because of that exact issue, because there was no sunset, I do not believe we should ever pass something like this with all the sunset. I love the aquatic center and I'm glad we have it, but that was a big issue then, so we may want to bring it up again. So anyway, I'll make a motion to approve this.
And is there a second? Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. Councilmember Costa?
Sorry, Councilmember Lingle, I just wanted to continue the discussion for a quick moment. Now, I did speak with Management Services Director, Mr. Wilkie, about this, and a lot of, I think, please correct me if I'm wrong, the concern with setting a sunset is the debt obligation. Is that what really, you know, the fact that that's a continued obligation and this income would then be our, our debt service payment for that? Is that why there would be concern about having a sunset on this assessment?
Only if the sunset was before the debt was paid off. And the debt that's being paid off is, I think we're probably six or eight years into it, so it still has another 22 to 24 years left. So we would have to, not, we would not have to, but we would, it would be my recommendation to have the assessment continue on until at least that debt is extinguished.
But then, if you would just indulge really quickly, isn't, is part of the issue then that the, the total amount of money that's coming in on this assessment isn't all being paid to debt? So we're not paying down the debt as quickly as possible because we are using these funds for other, although they are needed, for other purposes? So could the argument be made that if the assessment in full was paid toward debt service, it could then be paid down quicker and we could have a sunset on the assessment sooner?
Assessment does have a self-governing context where a portion of the funds that need to be spent have to be spent out of general other revenue sources. So if all the projects that need to get done have been done, then there won't be any other additional requirements. So that would be a self-limiting to the assessment at some point in the future. So there may be times when you're allowed to have a 3% increase, but you may not be able to because there aren't enough projects that are waiting to happen in any one particular year.
Right, but that's not necessarily my concern. There will always be projects. I'm never, you know, I'm never, the project's never going to be complete, whatever the project is, that's the way city government works. So I think that that's not necessarily my concern. My concern is within the amount of money that's brought in by the assessment. Is there a certain percentage that can go to debt service? Can we have that entire 100% of the assessment go toward debt service? Or is there a certain percentage, as I think you just stated, that has to go to other projects and such?
Well, there are certain obligations that districts just to survive, which are the, the cost of doing this type of activity right now and the payment to the county for processing the assessment. But at some point in time, it would be the council decision to say, we would want to have X number of dollars coming in for the assessment to cover debt service. And it's your decision to, of how much more you want to collect for things other than the debt service. Right now, the debt service is less than the assessment, right? So at that, if that's what you're saying is, we could limit it to something that's closer to the debt, and that would be something you can do year to year?
Thank you. So that's, that's something that I then would like to bring back to council, whether we make the decision this evening or not, is to think about what percentage of the assessment would we like to go to debt service in order to have a set date of a sunset on this assessment, hopefully before 24 years from now. Thank you.
Two questions. First, of the city attorney. My recollection when this passed was that it had to, because it was going to pass by a majority vote, not by a 66% vote, it was structured to cover not only the pool but the parks, and therefore there had to be some distribution with regard to that. And, yeah.
I, I don't know the history of it.
Okay, I think we probably need to go back.
I don't know exactly why that would have been required, but with regard to retiring the debt, if I may ask a question, the bonds don't have an early call date, do they?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
The reason I'm asking that question is because if they don't have an early call date, you can't pay them off sooner.
Yeah. Okay, so perhaps you could find that information, Mr. Wilkie, and relay that to all the council members. And city attorney, perhaps you could look back at that. But my recollection was that to make it a majority vote rather than a 66% vote, it was a parks and pool assessment district, and that there was some distribution required where a certain amount of it had to go to the park side, because that's the way it was structured. Dan's nodding his head up and down.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah. So maybe you could just drop us a brief note on that subject for whoever wants to do that. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. So I would like to bring, I would like to make a motion that we, what is all we need There's a lot to do with this one, actually. So I think that we, we accepted additional public, a public hearing. Oh, is it number three? And to adopt resolution number 5724-11, approving the engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessments for fiscal year 2011, 2012 for the park maintenance and city pool assessment district number 2002-01. So I'd like to make that a motion. And also asking that this come back to a date uncertain, I mean, I don't really, you know, this isn't a, you know, the biggest priority because this is going to be something that's going to be years down the line, but that they bring, that staff bring back the subject to a date uncertain for us to discuss, you know, the terms of the debt service and payback, and then also to discuss a possible sunset on this assessment. Thank you.
And a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Rather than having the staff bring it back, how about if we just appointed you to meet with the city attorney and the, and the finance director and Mr. McCaffrey and determine if there was something that you would want to bring back? And then if you would, you could just come back and do it. Would that be okay?
That's fine with me. That's okay with staff.
So you're amending the motion then?
I will. So amended.
And you amend your second?
So amended.
Okay. And now, is there any further discussion? And seeing no one's like, come on, could we vote, please? That passes 4-0 with one absent. And now we have consideration, item 10, consideration of a planning commission recommendation for a text amendment, TA-11-05, the city zoning ordinance to amend section, yeah, that one, 1 dot 32 dash dot 010 of the municipal code, establishing chapter 17 dot 006, appeal procedures for zoning ordinances. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council members. As the mayor indicated, this is a recommendation from the planning commission regarding a consolidation of the appeal procedure statute in our zoning ordinance and a simplification of the general appeal procedure that is in the municipal code, which allows any citizen to appeal an action. And that is retained for the public's benefit. The planning commission reviewed these sections of the ordinance and recommended a number of changes. The consolidation is intended to simplify the process. In our old ordinance, we had appeal procedures for a variety of different actions. They were not consistent and they were difficult to locate. We are consolidating, making one section for appeals and referencing back in the various sections. So the hope is that it will make it much easier for the public. I would like to note that we did receive one letter from Mr. James Dixon regarding this particular text amendment. And he has indicated that, he has spoken with staff, and he indicates that he feels that the language is not the most user-friendly. And so he has asked the council to consider the language before they adopt the ordinance. We have the planning commission adopted resolution and the minutes of the meeting. And the recommendation is that the council hold a public hearing, adopt the negative declaration, and direct staff to file a notice of determination, and to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 1569-11, approving the text amendment TA 1103. I'm sorry, there appears to be in your staff report, it says TA 1101, but it should say 1103. Amending the city zoning ordinance, section 1.32.010 of the municipal code, and to establish chapter 11.006, appeal procedures in the zoning ordinance. And that completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Do you know which, specifically which paragraph Mr. Dixon was struggling with?
Yes, he is actually struggling with the section of the ordinance that is under the general appeal procedures. And it is in the first paragraph where the... If, it's like the fourth line down, the fifth line down. If the denial, suspension, or revocation of such permit or the determination of such administrative decision involves the exercise of administrative discretion or personal judgment exercised pursuant to any of the provisions of this code... Oh, no, wait a minute. I'm sorry, that wasn't correct. I didn't mark it anywhere.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Oddly enough, that was, when I first read the staff report, I had to go back and probably read that a good three times because it's not necessarily a paragraph, that's one sentence.
It is one.
And so you have, I don't know, however many commas, and it gets very, very convoluted. I know that there's probably a lot of work that goes into it on the legal side and with staff that definitely understand it, but it was very difficult for me to understand. So I understand where he's coming from. I just wanted to keep, just make that quick statement. I do have two questions. Because I don't have the municipal code memorized, unfortunately, when I get something like this, I don't know what's new and what's existing. Is there any way to make it common practice for us to put the new additions or edits in red?
Absolutely, and I apologize.
I'm sorry, no, 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 need to apologize. Just for me, you know, it makes, and a lot of it, if it's just adding, then that's really easy, it'll be a block of text in red. If it's just been moved, you can maybe even just prent where it's been moved from, just so I have some guideline of where it's going and what's new and what's existing, so what's really changed.
And we did that in the planning commission staff report. We provided that very information to them, and it didn't make it forward to the council. So certainly, we will make it a practice to do that for you.
I would greatly, greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. And the other question I had was, I did read the minutes from the planning commission, and I may be on the wrong page, but I thought that on the first page, paragraph B, the 10 calendar days was supposed to be changed to 10 business days?
That is correct. That was the planning commission request, had it be changed to 10 business days.
Okay, because in the report that I have here, I don't know if you caught that, it might, I'm hoping, I want to make sure that it's the right one. On the first page of ordinance number 1569-11, paragraph B, it says 10 calendar days, and I just...
And you're correct, the correction should be business days.
Okay. So I just wanted to confirm, you know, I sometimes, you know, go through with a very fine-toothed comb, and I know I don't catch everything, and neither do you. Hopefully us doing this together will make sure we have everything covered in the future. Thank you.
Typo. Okay, so...
That was something they wanted to change.
Yeah. Kind of like the one we had to, yeah. Okay, so, is there any, Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Breeze, if we want to see something done with the language, would this have to go back to the planning commission? Or could we, could we just have staff revise the wording, maybe working with the city attorney, and then you bring it back to us? Would, or would have to go back to the planning commission?
If the language wants to be, if you would like some changes made to it, we could certainly work with the city attorney, return it.
Because I don't have, I'm not going to be able to suggest any wording, but Mr. Dixon's a pretty intelligent man, and if he finds it confusing, Councilmember Costa found, Councilmember Costa found it confusing, I believe we should probably suggest that it be reworded, reworked, maybe with staff and the help of the, the attorney, and come up with some other verbiage that may be less confusing for people. I mean, we, all of us know Mr. Dixon, he's, he's been around a long time. If it's confusing to him, I can guarantee it's going to be confusing to almost everyone. So I would like to see us not approve this tonight, but have it come back with some rework on that first paragraph. And I, unfortunately, I don't have any suggestions on what the wording should be.
Councilmember Costa, then we'll go to question for the city attorney.
I'm the one with the short hair.
Yeah, you're short here, okay, counsel.
No hair.
Yeah.
This has already been approved then by the planning commission, so all five of them understood this, it's just the rest of us out here that don't.
The planning commission did hold hearings on it, and their recommendation is that it be approved as it is.
City attorney, in your infinite wisdom and superior skill and ability, would you have a thought on, I'd just like to get this done, would you have a thought on an improved sentence structure for this? Or if we set it aside for, and came back to it, would you, you know, be able to take a few minutes and maybe help this sentence structure?
Tonight?
Yeah.
I would think not. What, hearing Councilmember Costa comments, the only thing to do would be to break these paragraphs up into sentences, and that wouldn't be something that I could just do off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, in that case, I guess I'm disposed to continue the item two.
I, I would suggest, however, that you may want to take public comment and close the public hearing.
Yes.
And then when we bring it back, we don't have to have another public hearing. But that's obviously up to you.
Yeah, well, we could, we could close, close the public hearing, and then when we brought it back, we could take additional comment on the, on the change. Okay. So, is anyone here that would like to address this subject?
Well, just in listening to your comments, I don't see how you can approve something you don't thoroughly understand. So let's get a clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else rise, bring it back to the council, and... I would, I would be uncomfortable putting it on consent when we're changing wording in an ordinance of this nature. I think it needs to come back as a continued item.
Bring it back in unfinished business?
Yeah, unfinished business. Do I need a motion for that, or can we just, okay, and then I need a motion to continue this item to the next council meeting and bring it back on unfinished business?
We're not continuing the public hearing, we're just bringing it back.
Yes.
So moved.
You move what he said? Okay, and a second, please?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to continue this item. And although the public hearing will be closed, I will take additional testimony under, with regard to the new language when we bring it back. And could we, is there any further discussion? And could we vote on that, please? And that passes 4-0 with one absent. Okay, and now we'll move on to item number 11, and I'll just let you read it this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the city council, consideration of a planning commission recommendation for a text amendment to the city zoning ordinance to amend chapter 17.048, PCD, Planned Commercial Development Districts, section 17.048.050, change in preliminary development plan. The proposed text amendment would clarify the type of review necessary for a change to an approved development plan. If adopted, the ordinance would be effective citywide in the planned commercial development zoning district. A negative declaration has been prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This is a planning commission recommendation to clarify some language in our planned commercial development, where there was some misunderstanding by the public that they might be required to return to planning commission or required to seek a planning commission approval for minor adjustments such as tenant improvements in the planned commercial development. So the language that the planning commission has recommendation, or, sorry, has recommended is simply to clarify language that's within the existing code. And they are recommending that the council hold a public hearing, adopt the negative declaration, prepare for the text amendment, and direct staff to file the negative declaration, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1570-11, approving text amendment TA 11. Again, I apologize, it says 1101, where it should say 1104. Amending the city zoning ordinance, chapter 17.048, Planned Commercial Development Districts, section 17.048.050, changes in preliminary development plan. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
And frankly, this is one that, that I worked on because a very long time ago, I tried to do a really minor modification to a store involving changing some electrical outlets, putting in a door between, through a partition, and capping off some plumbing. And because of the wording of the ordinance, it was going to require $2,000, $400 worth of blueprints to do a $400 job. And frankly, the wording didn't allow for anything else. So this is designed to allow businesses to make these changes. So this is designed to allow businesses to make these changes within the law and avoid Sunday modernizations. So it's a facilitator. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. My only single concern, I think this should go through with no issues tonight, but my only concern with this is the, what exactly minor modifications versus major modifications really means? I think that, you know, it, with no clear definition of what that means, you may get some folks doing larger modifications that should go back to the community development department, but they won't think that they would need to because of this, or?
No, you'd be referred back when you went to pull a building permit. So this is, just allows the community development some latitude, and it describes major modifications to a building footprint, so in other words, you can't enlarge or reduce the size of the building, you can't change the facade on the building or the architectural details. So you basically can't increase the size of the building or change what the public sees on the outside, but you can put an office partition in, or put an electrical in, or, you know, do those things on the inside that you would want to do, and that's the objective of this.
So a minor modification, I'm sorry, I'm just, with not having good background in this, if it's inside, and are we talking about, these are going to be all properties?
No, this is just PCD.
This is just PCD?
Yeah.
But if there was a wall, you said a partition wall, if that was an actual weight-bearing wall?
Load-bearing wall, that would, that, any, any of these things are going to require a building permit to actually do the work.
Right.
And then the building permit would in turn trigger a change in the development plan, if it, if it changed the building footprint, or it changed the facade of the building, or the architectural details, the part that the public sees.
But the footprint could then include the way that the inside of the building is?
No, the footprint is by definition the size of the building, how big it is. So if you wanted to make the building bigger, then you would have to go through a full process. If you were just moving a partition within the building, which is within the existing footprint, then you would go to the building department.
But again, if you wanted to build a load-bearing wall, sorry, what was the conclusion on that? Then that would be considered a minor modification?
Yes, it would be, but if it was within the structure, you wouldn't be able to build one.
Right, right, right. Not if you wanted to build out, but if it was within the structure, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I really like this text amendment. It goes with this theme that we've been going on, making us a more user-friendly city. This is exactly what this text amendment is going to do, so I think the Planning Commission did an excellent job on this, and they should be congratulated.
Okay, and seeing nobody else's light lit, would anyone in the public like to comment on this? Oh, come on, you guys. Chief, would you like to comment on this, please? Let the record show, the chief said no, sir. Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll come back to council. Is there any further discussion, or would someone care to make a motion? Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Costa, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt the negative declaration, prepare for the text amendment, waive future readings, and introduce ordinance number 1507, pren's 11, approving the text amendment TA 1104, amending the city's zoning ordinance, Chapter 17048, PCD, Planning Commercial Development Districts.
And a second, please. Councilmember Costa.
I'll second.
Okay, and is there any further discussion on this? Seeing no one's lights lit, could we vote, please? And that passes four zero with one absent. And I know that Lucille is now a much happier person, because life has just gotten a lot simpler. And our, as Councilmember Lingle pointed out, we are now a business-friendlierer community, and life is good. Okay, and now we'll move on to item number 11, and I'll just let you read it this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the City Council consideration of a Planning Commission recommendation for a text amendment to the city zoning ordinance to amend Chapter 17.048 PCD, Planned Commercial Development Districts, Section 17.048.050, Change in Preliminary Development Plan. The proposed text amendment would clarify the type of review necessary for a change to an approved development plan. If adopted, the ordinance would be effective citywide in the planned commercial development zoning district. A negative declaration has been prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This is a Planning Commission recommendation to clarify some language in our planned commercial development, where there was some misunderstanding by the public that they might be required to return to Planning Commission or required to seek a Planning Commission approval for minor adjustments such as tenant improvements in the planned commercial development. So the language that the Planning Commission has recommendation, or, sorry, has recommended is simply to clarify language that's within the existing code. And they are recommending that the council hold a public hearing, adopt the negative declaration, prepare for the text amendment, and direct staff to file the negative declaration, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1570, pren's 11, approving text amendment TA 11. Again, I apologize, it says 1101, where it should say 1104. Amending the city zoning ordinance, Chapter 17.048, Planned Commercial Development Districts, Section 17.048.050, Changes in Preliminary Development Plan. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
And frankly, this is one that I worked on, because a very long time ago, I tried to do a really minor modification to a store involving changing some electrical outlets, putting in a door between, through a partition, and capping off some plumbing, and because of the wording of the ordinance, it was going to require $20, $400 worth of blueprints to do a $400 job, and frankly, the wording didn't allow for anything else. So this is designed to allow businesses to make these changes within the law and avoid Sunday modernizations. So it's a facilitator. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. My only single concern, I think this should go through with no issues tonight, but my only concern with this is the, what exactly minor modifications versus major modifications really means? I think that, you know, it, with no clear definition of what that means, you may get some folks doing larger modifications that should go back to the community development department, but they won't think that they would need to because of this, or?
No, you'd be referred back when you went to pull a building permit. So this is, just allows the community development some latitude, and it describes major modifications to a building footprint, so in other words, you can't enlarge or reduce the size of the building, you can't change the facade on the building or the architectural details. So you basically can't increase the size of the building or change what the public sees on the outside, but you can put an office partition in, or put an electrical in, or, you know, do those things on the inside that you would want to do, and that's the objective of this.
So a minor modification, I'm sorry, I'm just, with not having good background in this, if it's inside, and are we talking about, these are going to be all properties?
No, this is just PCD.
This is just PCD?
Yeah.
But if there was a wall, you said a partition wall, if that was an actual weight-bearing wall?
Load-bearing wall, that would, that, any, any of these things are going to require a building permit to actually do the work.
Right.
And then the building permit would in turn trigger a change in the development plan, if it, if it changed the building footprint, or it changed the facade of the building, or the architectural details, the part that the public sees.
But the footprint could then include the way that the inside of the building is?
No, the footprint is by definition the size of the building, how big it is. So if you wanted to make the building bigger, then you would have to go through a full process. If you were just moving a partition within the building, which is within the existing footprint, then you would go to the building department.
But again, if you wanted to build a load-bearing wall, sorry, what was the conclusion on that? Then that would be considered a minor modification?
Yes, it would be, but if it was within the structure, you wouldn't be able to build one.
Right, right, right. Not if you wanted to build out, but if it was within the structure, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I really like this text amendment. It goes with this theme that we've been going on, making us a more user-friendly city. This is exactly what this text amendment is going to do, so I think the Planning Commission did an excellent job on this, and they should be congratulated.
Okay, and seeing nobody else's light lit, would anyone in the public like to comment on this? Oh, come on, you guys. Chief, would you like to comment on this, please? Let the record show, the chief said no, sir. Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll come back to council. Is there any further discussion, or would someone care to make a motion? Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Costa, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt the negative declaration, prepare for the text amendment, waive future readings, and introduce ordinance number 1507, pren's 11, approving the text amendment TA 1104, amending the city's zoning ordinance, Chapter 17048, PCD, Planning Commercial Development Districts.
And a second, please. Councilmember Costa.
I'll second.
Okay, and is there any further discussion on this? Seeing no one's lights lit, could we vote, please? And that passes four zero with one absent. And I know that Lucille is now a much happier person, because life has just gotten a lot simpler. And our, as Councilmember Lingle pointed out, we are now a business-friendlierer community, and life is good. And now, moving on to item 12. We will have the draft Urban Water Management Plan, alias the UWMP, from our senior administrative staff analyst, Susan Segovia, who wrote this monumental document all by herself.
Not quite. Honorable mayor, members of the council, Stetson Engineers worked with staff to develop the plan, and I'm going, we're required to have a public hearing. I'm going to read the recommendation. Stetson has a PowerPoint presentation for you, and both of us will be available afterwards to answer any questions. You'll be asked to do two things, and the recommendation is that you adopt Resolution 572811, which amends Resolution Number 529605, and that's concerning the water supply shortages in the city, and Resolution 5729, pren 11, which establishes and adopts the 2010 Urban Water Management Plan, which is a five-year plan for conservation and efficient use of water pursuant to California Water Code section, and authorizes the utility director or designee to file the plan with the California Department of Water Resources. So I have Kevin Sneed from Stetson Engineers.
We'll be talking about the Urban Water Management Plan. What I want to do is just walk through the contents, what is required by the Department of Water Resources of an urban water management plan. I will be addressing generally five major items, requirements, the purpose of an urban water management plan, changes to the requirements since the 2005 Urban Water Management Plan, public participation and public notice requirements, and specifically the components of the city's urban water management plan. The state has prescribed that every urban water supplier for municipal purposes shall update an urban water management plan at least once every five years, by December 31st, and years ending in five and zero. There was an amendment that I'll address a little bit later on, that was the requirement, SB 7, the requirement for water conservation, sometimes referred to as 20 by 2020. That had additional requirements and extended the smittle period for this particular cycle to July 1st, 2011. And by definition, urban water supplier is a supplier either public or privately owned that provides municipal supplies directly or indirectly to either 3,000 customers or supplying more than 3,000 acre feet. In this case, the city, by definition, is an urban water supplier in either account. Purpose of an urban water management plan, and particularly the cities, is that an approved urban water management plan is required by the Department of Water Resources to receive state grants or loans. It's also a long-term planning document for water supply purposes. It's a long-term planning document for water conservation measures. It's a long-term planning document for the city's water shortage contingency planning. Changes that the state has adopted and implemented since the 2005 Urban Water Management Plan was adopted and submitted includes SB 1087, recording, reporting on projected water use for low-income households. There is a requirement that there be a minimum of 60 days' notice that a water supplier is going to be considering changes and amendments to its 2005 Urban Water Management Plan, and as I alluded to, Senate Bill 7, which requires a 20% reduction in use by the year 2020. There is also a requirement in these Urban Water Management Act that there be public participation afforded and public notice given. The city notified the county of Santa Barbara, water agencies within the Long Poak Valley, specifically Mission Hills Community Services District, and Vandenberg Village Community Services District, and the San Andres River Water Conservation District. This went out on April 14th, being today's June 21st, the 60-day minimum requirement has been met. Notice of public hearing is posted with the city clerk. It was also published in the Long Poak Record on June 10th and June 17th. And the county, the cities, and the agencies referred to above were also notified of the public hearing in an email dated June 7th. The components of a urban water management plan in general, and the cities in particular, consists of a description of what the agency coordination activities were, description of the supplier's service area and population estimates, sources of supply for the city, past, current, and projected water use. Primarily, the city is reliant on groundwater supplies. There is a minor amount of surface water, on the average, of about 10 acre feet, a minor amount of recycled water use, about 5 to 10 acre feet a year, but by and large, it's groundwater supplies. Currently, the demand is on the order of about 4,485 acre feet. In the year 2030, it's projected to be about 5,800 acre feet. Historic water levels, year in and year out, are in equilibrium, which means that the groundwater basin in this particular area is well-managed. And there's also an agreement for long-term releases from Lake Ochuma to maintain the long-term water levels and maintain groundwater management. Another component is water supply opportunities, that is discussed in the plan. Water use, there is, again, the Senate Bill 7 requires a reduction of daily per capita water use of 10% by the year 2015, and 20% by the year 2020, and there is formulas that prescribe what that, how that is to be calculated. The city's current per capita daily water use is 101 gallons per capita per day. Going through the prescribed calculation process in the Urban Water Management Act, the 2015 urban interim goal would be 121. The 2020 target is 117. Clearly, the city and the staff and the citizens here have done a fantastic job with the current use of 101, or are we in compliance with the 2020 goals? There's also a requirement, there are demand management measures, these are water conservation activities, very briefly. In general, there are residential programs such as water surveys and audits, residential plumbing retrofits for toilets, metering of all meters with commodity rates, high-efficiency washing machine rebate programs, dishwasher rebate programs that are offered, or a variety of water conservation activities, including public information, school education, and conservation pricing for water sales. There is also commercial, industrial, and institutional programs along with large land along with large landscape rebate programs. There is also a component of an urban water management plan that requires water shortage contingency analysis, such that if there was a drought, what stages of action a water supplier would implement. The cities address those. One significant component of that is the law in the state of California states that, under no circumstances, the urban water supplier required to require its citizens to reduce its usage below 100 gallons per capita per day. This is in the context that the city's usage currently is 101. So while there is a requirement that there be reduction in usage up to 50%, there's also a minimum that a supplier never will require its citizens to go less than 100 gallons per capita per day. Lastly, there is discussions about potential opportunities for use of recycled water and water quality of the sources of supply. And that concludes my presentation and staff is available to address comments.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have a little bit of an advantage because I attended the Public Utilities Commission where this is the second time I've seen this. But just, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but just for the public's, our city is in very good shape as far as meeting all requirements.
Yes, I will say with, unquivocally, the city is in fantastic shape. I think a comment was made that really, the conservation efforts have gone far beyond what is mathematically and technically required. The city has been proactive for the last 20 years in implementing retrofits of toilets, faucets, showerheads, so forth and so on. And it's, the staff and the city citizens should be commended.
Thank you. And so we are currently, as a city, we are at about 101 per capita and we will never be asked to go below 100. Is that?
That is correct.
So really, we have very little room for improvement.
I'd say that that's probably a fair statement in that the city, again, has already done a fantastic job.
Okay, good. And then I have one question for Ms. Segura. At that Utility Commission meeting, there were a number of typographical errors we've found in here. Have those been corrected yet or?
Those are incorporated. Those were also posted on the website. And we reread the document one more time. I found two other corrections that I'm going to give you. They're very minor. I'm going to pass those out now. But all the other corrections are in there as well. And again, I want to mention that, you know, most of those were typographical and we've read this many, many times and coordinated with a lot of staff and the staff has done a great job. I'll just show you the two errors that were found. And those will be changed with your concurrence before this is submitted to Department of Water Resources. And I want to mention that the corrections that were found did not change the meaning. They were just primarily typographical. If you turn to page 27 of 77, which is your main text, and underneath number 7, there's a full paragraph. The second and third lines of that paragraph will change after water use to flush hydrants and we're asking that you delete miscellaneous water usage for the city landfill. That's no longer correct. That will, that will be deleted and the rest will remain and special city events will remain as is. And then if you turn to page 44, under the demand management measure I, conservation programs for commercial, industrial, and institutional, there's a typographical error in the second paragraph, the third line from the bottom. It reads with a maximum of $80 of the material cost. That program was increased, so it should say $103.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have questions.
Okay.
I'm looking through this and back on the 24th day of March of 92, the council passed a resolution and when you read it, it says it publicly declared that a long-term water shortage exists. And in section 1, it says it is hereby declared that a long-term water shortage exists in the city of Lompoc. And Lompoc also has a serious problem related to water quality. Now we're talking about projections out to 2030. Currently, we're at 4,485 acre feet. Now we're talking about increasing in 2030 by 627 acre feet, up to 5,182. So this resolution, basically, that I'm looking at here.
Which resol, I think I know the one, but can you state the number, please?
4159, parentheses 92, long-term water shortage in the city of Lompoc. I don't know. There, I got it goofed up with appendixes in here, too. 4159, parentheses 92.
I want to mention that in the 90s, and let me turn to that one.
I was bored late last night.
For you to read all the resolutions, you have to be wide awake. We have quite a few. But I will explain that in just a moment.
I don't have a page number.
It's towards the back.
Right in front of the tab that says Resolution 5363. It's a blank, it's like, if you go to the back and start paging forward, it's one of the first. Start from the back, it's, hang on, let me get a page count. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
It's the smallest print.
It's about, it's about 18 pages in. It's the one right next to here. Let me just walk over there.
I have it, I'm sorry. No, I still don't have that one.
It's in front of this tab right here. It's this, this resolution here that we put.
There it is, okay. 41, okay. All of these resolutions were actually extended and adopted. And at the time, we were actually finishing and coming out of a drought. So these were extended and all of our conservation programs were extended. So I guess to answer your question, we are in, we are in good shape for our water. This was just a provision at the time that, you know, allowed us to extend all of our water conservation ordinances and resolution and continue the programs.
So this won't come true again until the next drought?
Well, actually, what I want to mention, and I can go through them. I'm going to have to try to remember them. The city has made several changes in our water treatment plan and also our wastewater treatment plan. And we are in, we're in very good shape. We also have a settlement agreement that was very significant for Lompoc. It was actually concluded in 2002 and that's for the water releases from Kachuma. And we did find out, and that's mentioned, it's mentioned several times in the report, that Lompoc is in long-term equilibrium. That means that we're in excellent shape.
Yeah, I follow that pretty well, even from the days of Jin Chow here, so. I've got another thing and I want to bring this up to the council. If we go in here to Appendix E, Resolution 5629, paragraph 10, that if you go to section 7 on it.
Okay, just, just one moment. I have the res, okay, which section are you talking about?
Well, it would start in section 6. But section 7 is the one that I wanted to bring attention to the council here.
Oh, okay, I want.
5629, paragraph 10.
There is no paragraph 10.
No parentheses.
Parenthesis 10, I mean.
Okay, and whereabouts?
Go to section 7.
Due to the current federal, state, and local economic crisis.
Okay, are you asking about?
I'm just wondering if council wants to extend the, suspend the fees on this.
Oh, okay.
Because it expires on the 30th.
And for the rest of the council, what I can explain is this is our original water retrofit program, the one that we did with toilets, showerheads, and faucet aerators. Now we've expanded this to also include our other rebate programs, dishwashers, clothes washers, and other programs that might be proposed. We did suspend the collection of the developer fees to pay for this program because we had a surplus and we were also asking to assist the community. So that's what was done. And yes, if you don't do something, developer fees will begin to be collected as of July 1st.
Do we have an excess still?
Pardon me?
Do we still have the excess funds?
Yes. They are being spent on the other programs, but we do have funds. And I don't have, I don't have that figure before me.
Do we? This is a question for the consultant. So now we're at 101 gallons and the ultimate best case in the whole world is 100 gallons. Do we still have a need or, no, do we still have a legal requirement to continue to collect funds and to do more conservation when we've already reached their ultimate goal? Or can we just cut out the whole thing and go on with our lives? Because we have like $1.1 million sitting in the bank that we can't do anything with because nobody can qualify to use it for like the toilet program?
Well, let me explain one thing. Those funds you authorized being able to use for many conservation programs. So you did authorize them to be used on the dishwasher rebate program, the clothes washer rebate program, and other programs that council approves, fix a leak and so forth. So they are being used and they're a great benefit and staff is definitely working with those. Now, I'm going to let Kevin talk about the law because we do have an obligation and Kevin can give you a little more information. I want to point out one thing that Kevin may highlight. This year, our per capita water usage, 101, right? Is 101, but I think you need to take several things into consideration. We have an excellent water conservation program. We also have people in our community that are conserving for a lot of reasons. Economically, there's, there's many reasons to do so. We've also had a lot of rain. We've had over 24 inches of rain this year. So even though our rainfall is low, Kevin can give you the 10-year average, I don't know that we're going to have 101 next year. So there's several factors there. We're low, we're meeting our goal, but we can't guarantee that we're going to have 101. The reason that we have that low per capita water usage is a combination of all those, all those areas. The programs, the astuteness of the community, and also the economic situation and rainfall. We, 24 inches is very high. Our average rainfall in Lompoc is about 15 inches a year.
What is the, what is the source of all those revenues that are used for this beyond builder fees?
That's, that's the source. And, and the idea, and I just want to give a quick synopsis of that program. Developers came to the city of Lompoc at around 8990. And actually, we developed the original water retrofit ordinance based on some other communities that did the same thing. Morro Bay, San Luis, Abyslo, and there was another that escapes me at this time. But the developers said, we want to continue development. We realize that you have a water shortage. So the idea that we have is, in order to continue developing, we will change out high-flow fixed plumbing fixtures. And at the time, it was toilets. Now it's toilets, washing machines, dishwashers and so forth. Leaks were expanding. And basically, by changing those out, the idea is that if a developer comes in, it's supposed to be a wash. You change these fixtures out and offset your projected water usage coming in. So it was a benefit to development. It's also been a great benefit to us because it's extended our water. Water conservation is one of the cheapest sources of a new water supply. You're, you're investing, you know, a lot less than you would at a D cell plant, a lot of other options. So that's why this program was developed and that's why it's been continued. And for us, it's been excellent. We've been doing it for a long time. And I'd like Kevin to address the legal requirements.
As, as is alluded to, the 10-year average is 124 gallons per capita per day. The 2020 target is 117. If there is a belief that 101 gallons per capita that we're experiencing 2010 is an aberration as the result of significantly higher rainfall, then there needs to be continued efforts to promote conservation, the conservation programs. If there is a belief that it's, 101 is the result of the conservation programs and it's not an aberration, the 100 gallons per capita is simply a floor at which the state will not require further reductions. However, it does not provide any disincentive. Any conservation activities are commendable.
Do you recall what the prior year was? If we were 101 this year, what were we last year?
This is still the correct page, right? Okay, if you turn to page 32 in your plan, it lists all the daily per capita water usage beginning from 1995 through 2010. And 2009 was 113. And 2008 was 126. So you can see, you can see the range there from 1995, 114, going all the way down. 1997, I don't remember what the conditions were, was all the way up to 134. So we've reduced and have a low per capita water usage. But in some years when, when it was drier and, you know, possibly coming out of the drought and so forth, we have higher water usage. So it's very, it's really important for us to maintain the low water usage. Maintaining and actually achieving our 2020 goal is going to qualify us for grants as well. If we do not do this, we will not be eligible for some of those grants from Department of Water Resources.
Okeydoke. Thank you. Any other questions before we open for public comment? Nope, okay.
Nope, okay. And who in the public would like to talk about this water report? Seeing no one run forward, we'll come back to the council. Who would like to talk about it up here? Councilmember Lingle.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a recommendation. I move that we approve Resolution 5227, print is eight, which amends Resolution Number 5296, print is five, concerning water supply shortages in the city, and Resolution Number 5729, print is 11, which establishes and adopts the 2010 Urban Water Management Plan update of the California Water Code, 10610.
In a second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you. I think that this is a great document. Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck, for catching that. I usually catch everything, and you caught it, and I didn't. But I am really excited to actually see some of these things, the possible Lompoc groundwater recharge spreading basins project, and looking to these things in the future, the multi-agency study that will be going on. So I'm really excited to see that. Thank you for all your work, and thank you for staying so late this evening. It's very late. And with that, I second the motion. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Lingle.
I'd also like to echo Councilmember Costa's compliments. At the utility commission meeting, there were several people from other agencies that are actually, I don't know if they're kidding, but they said they want to use our plan as a, as a plan for their communities as well. So it's a real compliment.
I'm trying to find it. Does anybody second any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights lit, could we vote, please? And that passes 4-0, with one absent. And now we need to go back to- Here, just use yours. Here, you read. Now we need to go back to your question. We need to go back to Councilmember Starbuck's question. If you could come and address that, please? Yeah. The June 30th issue. And that relates to the expiration of 5629 dot 10. Can I not find it the second time?
It's the second to the last.
Three pages from the back.
Yeah.
Too far forward. There you go. Okay. So can you come back and talk to us about 5629 dot 10 that expires next week?
It expires next week, and I wanted to mention, I don't have, I don't have our bottom-line figures right now. Mary Camer would have those, you know, from the programs. But you're right. Section seven, and you know, for the audience as well, says that due to the current federal, state, and local economic crisis, the requirements for payment of the in-lu fees set forth above shall be suspended until June 30th, 2011. And what that is talking about is the collection of the developer fees which fund these water conservation programs.
I don't know. Since it's in this report, could we move to extend it?
What I would suggest is that you have, add direct staff to bring back a resolution at the next meeting that just is effective as of July 1st.
Okay. I need a consensus for that. So we need the second and the third?
Second.
Third.
You can be a fourth if you want. Okay. So if you would do that, please? And we commend Councilmember Starbuck for the catch, because I missed it. Okay. Any, any questions? Are you good?
I'm good, I'm just waiting.
I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
We're, we're on it. Thank you so very much. Okay. And the next one will be unfinished business, item 13, the, of the approval of the human services funding allocation fiscal year 2010 through 2011. Come on down, Dinah.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, people in Lompoc watching council meeting. I'm here this evening to present to you the approval of the 2011, 2012 human service funding allocations. And I'm asking that council approve these human service funding allocations and also approve a reservation of $10,500 for shelter services, and also to authorize the city administrator or her designee to sign memorandum of understanding with the human services agencies to distribute these funds. As you recall, back in March, the city council did approve a budget for the Community Development Block Grant Human Services Budget, as well as budgets for the Affordable Housing Home Funds. At that time, we were working with a preliminary budget number because we did not have final figures from HUD. So we were working with a number that we'd received from the county, and that was for our working budget. Since that time, we were made aware in April of what the city's federal CDBG grant would be. We were notified that it was going to be 17% less than what we had originally been told it was going to be. And because of that, we had to also go back and make reductions to the human service grant allocations that were made earlier in the year. And our Human Service Commission did do that activity. They did meet on May 16th, and then, those are the recommendations that you have in your staff report, and what the city clerk distributed to you were some additional changes that were made on June 6th after this staff report had already been submitted for council, for the council packets. And I just wanted to highlight what those changes are from your council packet. And we do also have Barbara Holt with the Human Service Commission here, if you would like to ask her questions. Essentially, what the commission wanted to do is to make two agencies whole. What they initially had to do, because of the reductions, they went back and they reduced all of the agencies at least 5%. In addition, a couple agencies were actually eliminated for funding, and this was just because of the funding reduction. But in June, they felt that a couple of agencies could be brought up to what they had at least asked for, to at least bring them whole. One was going to be the Community Action Commission, the Senior Nutrition Program. They had requested $18,000. They had originally been awarded $11,400, but the Community Action Commission had indicated to the commission that they were already paying the city $12,000 a year in rental fees in order to provide the nutrition program at the Anderson Recreation Center. And because of that, the commission felt that the Community Action Commission shouldn't have to pay additional just to provide the service. They were already providing the service, and so the commission wanted to bring that allocation up another $600. In addition, Meals on Wheels is a very special program. They are a program that provides food and also visiting services to those who are very low-income and also housebound, many disabled. They had asked the city for $4,500. In the reduction, they were awarded $4,000, I believe, 225, or 275, thank you. And they were brought up to their actual request to the city of $4,500. The third change has to do with the Parks and Recreation. I was told, again, after the staff report had gone to print, that Parks and Recreation were requesting that they would be able to roll forward some of their current 2010, 2011 funds, and just roll them forward into the next fiscal year after July 1. They were able to do that because of how payroll funding fell. They were able to achieve some cost savings there, and so they would have some funds that they could use in the next fiscal year. And so because of that, we've made three changes to the recommendations. But that concludes my staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. The one question I have, and you may have just said this, but I'm not sure. When I attended the Human Services Commission meetings, the reduction was 5%, and there was also a use of human services reserves?
Yes.
And so I didn't see that in the staff report anywhere?
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted to confirm for the knowledge of council and the public that there was reserves used?
Yes.
And the, and what was the amount?
It was the amount that was brought up for those two programs. So it was 8,000, I'm sorry, $825 was taken from reserves. $825.
And that was less than originally anticipated because of, because when it was first discussed, it was in the 3,000s.
I'm not aware-
Was it 2,000, it was in the 2,000s? It was a larger number than 825. So what brought it down to 825? Was that that I'm-
Well, there were two agencies that were eliminated from funding.
Right, but there was still the need to use about, I wish I had the meeting minutes with me. I was in attendance at that meeting, and that's what brought it. And I believe Commissioner Benham was one of the folks that made a, the recommendation that we go down to 5%, and then to cover that other percentage was the use of reserves.
Right. I, I think because, well, what I was trying to do in the staff report is combine actions that were, that took place during two separate meetings. One was on May 16th, and the other was on June 6th. I believe you're referring to some of the action taken, that was taken place on May 16th, where, where you were in attendance and where we did go into reserves, I believe for about $3,000 to bring up the reduction, so they were only 5%. I think they were going to be a little closer to 8%.
Right. And so now that they're, now that the use of reserves, the use is 8, is $875?
That, that action was taken at the June 6th meeting. So after we had taken some of the money from reserves to reduce the percentage reduction to 5%, I believe a couple of the commissioners noted that for the Community Action Commission and also for Meals on Wheels, that their intent had been to bring those agencies to a slightly higher level of funding, the Community Action Commission at $12,000, Meals on Wheels to $4,500. So when they noted that the reduction had reduced them below what they had intended, they asked if we could dip into reserves for that $825. And those are the changes that are highlighted in the handout that I provided to you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I'm just a little bit confused, and I, I'm sorry if I missed this. So what brought you up from originally needing 3,000, around $3,000 in reserves to not needing reserves?
No, we did. We did use reserves to reduce the percentage reduction. I believe it was going to be an 8% reduction-
Correct.
-due to the CDBG reduction that we received. And in order to not cut the agencies back as severely, we did dip into reserves, and I believe it was about $3,000.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to, so what is the 825 versus the 3,000?
That was action taken at the June 6th meeting.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is, what is the total amount of reserves that were used to bring these, bring this up to only a 5% cut and not an 8% cut?
You know, I don't have that particular figure.
Okay.
So it would be about $3,825 approximately. I could provide that figure to you later if you'd like.
Okay. I just wanted to give council a general idea that, you know, they were able to lower that with the use of some of their reserves. And then the second thing, I just have to state that I abstain from line item, any decision-making or discussion on line item three, which is the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County, Senior Nutrition Program, because I am a board member, acting board member of the Community Action Commission. Thank you.
I'm sorry, who's next? Since I couldn't pronounce your name earlier, Councilmember Starbuck will give you a first chance.
One with no hair. Dinah, I just wanted to say, I've sat on a lot of these commissions, and I know that commissioners worked very hard on separating this out, and I'm very pleased with the end result. I'm sorry you had to go into reserves to do it, but I'm sure that all these organizations will thank you, and I'd like to thank the Human Services Commission for your time that you put into this.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank you and the commission. I, I also realize how difficult it is to divvy up small amounts of money when there are many agencies that are in desperate need. But I'd like you, if you wouldn't mind, just address the agencies that received no funding. Just if you could sort of recap the thought process from, for the commission that awarded them, actually, no funding.
You know, the agencies that were awarded no funding, I believe, came out of the fact that, as they went through a couple of different reiterations, those programs had received small amounts of funding, and when we ultimately had to do the reductions, the amounts that were going to be awarded to those agencies were so small, less than $1,000 in some cases, that the commission felt it really wouldn't make that much of a difference ultimately to that agency. So it really didn't have to do necessarily with the worthwhile activity that the program was going to be providing to the community. It had to do more with the fact that the grant amount was just going to be so, so small. Those programs included the homeless inmate jail discharge program. I think they were going to be awarded about $900. The Big Brother, Big Sister program, I think, was going to be awarded just a couple hundred dollars. So again, it was, it was not because the programs themselves were not worthwhile. It had more to do with the fact that, basically, almost triaging and putting funds toward those programs that they felt were just going to have a bigger impact.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council at this time? Okay. We'll open this for public comment. Who would like to speak?
Ann McCarty, North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. Mary Lynn, city council members. I just wanted to echo the comments of the city council members as a thank you to the Human Service Commission for the diligence that was put into deliberating over the pot of money and who was going to get what. And I, I was able, I was honored to sit through that process. I appreciate the ability to do that. And I thank the city council for adopting the recommendations and for moving forward with funding the, the agencies that you're able to fund. Being a nonprofit in the city of Lompoc and providing services is, I use the word honor again, it is an honor. And we do the work because we believe in the city and we believe in the good people that we are able to live amongst, and we want to live in a healthy environment. And as a member of the North County Rape Crisis Center, that's the charge that you've given us, and that's what we're going to take on with, with the money that, that you do provide us with. So thank you very much.
Next.
And I'm Barbara Holt, member of the Human Service Commission. And regarding the questions on the reserves, I think the commission that night agreed that they would take 3,000 out of the reserves. What we took out of the reserves, plus this 825 additional, is still less than the 3,000 we agreed to take out of that reserve. And I think, you know, they're very diligent and I know, I didn't want to, I would have given them everything and taken everything from the reserve, but we have some better people than me that are serving on that commission at this time, so. But the other thing was is on the Senior Nutrition Program and the Meals on Wheels, when we deliberated in May, we tried very hard to come up with the 12,000 for the rental thing and to keep Meals on Wheels at the 4,500 because they're a bare bones grassroots program and they are really having a problem. And after the fact, I think they went back and looked at it and even when we made the reductions, they weren't at that. So we didn't, couldn't vote on it because it wasn't on our agenda that night, but the consensus was that's what they wanted and that's the reason that the staff report was changed in some respects. So, I mean, and what we eliminated, Dinah put it very nicely, you'd like to help them all, but sometimes it costs more to execute a contract for, you know, less than $1,000 than it's even worth doing, which isn't a nice thing to say, but you know, it's going to, staff's paying for that. So, anyway.
Thank you, Barbara. Does anyone else would like to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and come back to the council for further discussion. Councilmember Costner.
Thank you, Mary Lynn, and thank you Commissioner Holt for your clarification in your, in your statements. I really, they're greatly appreciated and I, again, wanted to just restate what the other council members have mentioned. I really appreciate the hard work. I've been at these meetings as well and you guys are doing a wonderful job. I know this is very tough and luckily the nonprofits have been very supportive from what I've been hearing. They understand that the cuts are just happening on all levels. So with that, I just want to reiterate that with my extension to line item three, I would like to make a motion that the city council approve fiscal year 2011, 2012 human services funding allocations, approve a reservation of 10,500 for shelter services and Fund 64 and authorize the city administrator or her designated to sign memorandum of understandings with the human services agencies to distribute these funds.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item from the council? Seeing no lights lit, could we vote, please? And that passes 4-0 with one absent. Okay. Now we're coming to item 14. I have just received an update to the transit plan as the rest of us have. I have not looked at it. I had.
Presentation.
Yeah, but it's unfinished business. This is a continued item from before when we continued it, right? Okay. Tally Hall, let's go.
Mayor, members of the council. First of all, the handout that you received is a copy of the PowerPoint that'll be given to you tonight by the consultant. Tonight, you have a recommendation before you to receive presentation of a draft short-range transit plan. Secondly, to approve the first year recommendations contained in the short-range transit plan and authorize the aviation transportation administrator to implement the recommendations and other operational changes to City of Long Poak Transit System. Those first year recommendations we're looking for and approvals are for reducing service hours by one hour per day, Monday through Friday. The new hours would be 6:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. instead of 8:00 p.m. Secondly, eliminate Route 2A. Route 2 will remain and serve the same destinations. Route 5 will be rerouted to improve running time and on-time performance. Interline service between Routes 1, 2, and 3 will be discontinued. Each route will operate as a distinct route with a separate bus. And finally, schedule adjustments will occur on the fixed routes to align service with real running times and also on the Wine Country Express to provide better connections with other regional providers such as the Breeze. After that, we'd like to have you provide comments on the plan and direct staff to return with a final plan. With that, I'll introduce Charles Klaus with TPG Consulting and he'll present you with a PowerPoint presentation on the plan, after which I will be coming back up to give additional comments.
It's a pleasure to be here. This has been sort of an interesting journey for us, both in terms of time compression as well as some unique challenges that we've faced as, as we've gone through the development of the plan. I want to start off by specifically thanking a number of your staff members, Larry Bean, Kevin McKeon, and Richard Fernbaugh. All three of those have really provided us with not only their wisdom and insight, but guidance along the way to help bring the plan to you tonight. And I think you'll find that they, along with the documents, support the idea of actively managing your transit system and really establishing a framework for you to go forward in the future and be very successful. This provides you with a list of folks that assisted us in the development of the plan so you can tell it was a wide-ranging group of people. I'm going to go through this fairly directly, but feel free to ask questions as we go along the way. We did include as part of this exercise, a public process, and that included onboard passenger surveys. We surveyed virtually everybody on the bus. We used the technical advisory committee, which was made up of a group of people representing agencies as well as city staff. And the draft short-range transit plan has been posted on your website since mid-April. We identified early on five challenges that are facing the COLT system as, as we embark on fiscal 2011, 2012. The first is fare box ratio requirements, and we'll talk about that at some length here in a second. An appreciable drop in ridership over the last couple of years. The need to look at route level analysis and determine how the routes are performing both individually as well as as a system. The need to look at the marketing program and try to provide a counterweight, if you will, to the loss in ridership. And that has led to some financial stability questions, not necessarily in terms of overall funding, but in terms of some technical requirements that are placed on urbanized area operators such as COLT when it comes to state and federal requirements. First, let's talk about fare box ratio requirements. This has probably been the single largest criteria that we, along with your staff, have wrestled with as we've prepared the draft plan. First, there is a requirement for the amount of money that comes into the fare box from the passengers to reach 20% for the overall system. So as we look at COLT fixed route, its dial-a-ride, Wine Country Express, Santa Barbara Shuttle, all of those added together on a system-wide basis need to generate 20% for operating costs from the fares. That's been a struggle for COLT over a number of years and in recognition of that, several months ago, SB CAG adopted, as they are authorized to do under state law, an interim requirement for the next three years of 15%. And the intent is to provide COLT with an opportunity to rearrange its operations, look at its overall structure, and build from that baseline of 15% back towards the 20 that's required by state law. The historical assessment that we looked at, looks at it in several different ways. The first is looking at it from the fixed route standpoint. You can see the requirement there is 20% and each of the last four fiscal years, you can see that we're well below 10%. And on the demand response requirement, you can see here's the standard and here's where we've been over the last few years. So it has been a challenge both for fixed route and demand response to meet those state mandates. Some of that is also associated with the blending of different types of service. The 20% fare box requirement typically comes to an agency that's in a larger urban setting, doesn't have a lot of rural service between communities such as yours, providing service to San Inez as well as into Santa Barbara. So there's, there's some unique characteristics of the COLT service that have led that historical assessment and gives us a better perspective on how to attach or look at options in the future. Again, the challenge is within the next five years to get to the state mandated 20%. And that's quite honestly the motivator between, behind much of the recommendations that, that Richard just suggested to you in the first year, as well as the five-year plan for recommendations as we looked at the total system. Wanted to talk a little bit about the drop in ridership and just to give you a sense of magnitude, in the last few years, we've seen a 28% loss in ridership. So you can see back in '06, '07, down to '09, '10, we've had a loss in system ridership as well as individual service ridership. What we found was that, that to a certain degree mirrors many other transit systems in California and it has a direct correlation with the downturn in the economy. As people are less apt to travel for business purposes or commute, as people are moving out of the community, we're seeing fewer and fewer transit trips. There was a fare box, or fare increase that, that happened during that period of time and we think that to a certain degree had an influence on some of the choice riders who chose not to ride as, as frequently. But we did start seeing some stabilization out here in 2009 and that trend has continued on into 2010. So we, we think we've hit the bottom in terms of ridership, but we don't see an appreciable upturn yet. And again, we think that's due to the economy and, and certainly is not unique to Long Poak. We see that in a lot of the systems that we work with. Route level analysis, we looked at all of the routes that currently are, are being operated, both the fixed route services that, that operate within the community as well as Wine Country Express and the Santa Barbara Shuttle. And we, we determined that there was some service imbalance. That means there, there's in some cases too much service or in other cases not enough. Ridership demand drives that in some cases and we looked at hours of operation, both the breadth of the day as well as the days of the week. And so all of that went into the route level service analysis and that became the technical underpinnings of the recommendations that you have before you tonight. By way of example, here's a couple of different slides that show time of day for service and this particular one, you can see that the peak is, is somewhat in the morning with some minor peaks in the afternoon and the morning commute. That's typified by ridership going to and from a shopping center or an activity center that doesn't open until later in the morning. This would be more typical of a peaking for commuter service where you get the morning peak here as people go to work or go to school, get an afternoon peak here, that's typically students coming home from school, and then a later peak for commuters and in some cases, college students going home later in the, in the day or in the early evening. And then again, here's a peaking on, I believe that's Route 4, and this typically would look at a, at a shopping center oriented profile. We also evaluated your current marketing program. We did that under two evaluation techniques. The first was the onboard passenger survey and we've got a lot of good data, both for fixed route passengers as well as demand response passengers. And you can see some of the typical questions. We did an age profile, frequency of use. You'll see a lot of people use it on a daily basis. Found that to be somewhat unique in that Long Poak has a service profile of folks that are dedicated riders that, that use the service more often than, than we see in some other cities. Trip purpose, this was also sort of unique. Work and students were, were the top two. That's a great indicator of strong ridership because those are commuters. Those are people that ride on a three or four or five times a week basis and tend to give you a core group of people that you can build from in the future. And then some alternative mode of transportation profile information in terms of ways that people would get around if, if they didn't have the bus available. We did find another interesting statistical fact and that is that COLT passengers spend over half a million dollars annually in the, in the community. So as they go out and shop and, and spend money in the community, they're actually generating about $500,000 a year in sales. We found that the, the overall marketing materials are, are in pretty good shape. There's, there's a fairly nice uniformity of presentation and style. There is a need to freshen up the material. In, in some cases, they've been published at different time horizons and they're not all integrated with the same information and some of the information is now getting out of date. So one of the recommendations we have in the plan is to, to go back and perhaps update your, your marketing profile for all of your components, system, example, Wine Country Express, et cetera. And we also would suggest the expansion of the use of the material and the distribution. We found that it wasn't readily available within the community and that's something that I think can be handled fairly easily once they're, they're updated and redistributed. Let me go through the, the series of recommendations. Some of these are short-term and have been articulated in the staff report as items that we'd like to get started next year and some of these are, are more long-term over the five-year plan. The, the first recommendation we'd made was to reduce the hours of service during the day. Currently, you end at 8:00 p.m. and we would recommend that that be reduced or cut to 7:00 p.m. As, as we went through the ridership surveys, we found that literally almost nobody rides after 7 o'clock at night. The one exception would be to Allen Hancock students and those can be accommodated in a, a demand response or a fixed route, modified fixed route component, which we've accounted for in the recommendations. But this would save approximately 7% in your operating costs for fixed route and we think that would be a great way to start doing cost containment. The, the second part is to look at Routes 2 and 2A. As you know, those are routes that operate on the same routing. They just operate in the reverse direction. We found that the ridership currently is not significant enough to warrant two-way travel on those routes. And so we recommend combining 2 and 2A together. Your service coverage would stay the same in that you would still travel down the same streets, but that simple combination would reduce your overall cost by about 16%. And again, we think cost containment is the key to getting the fare box ratio where it needs to be. We, we also think that one of the information pieces we got from the ridership survey was a desire for better efficiency. That is, a better on-time performance and, and better continuity for the passengers to know when the buses will be arriving at a particular stop. And we feel the combining of Route 2 and 2A would give them a little bit more certainty in terms of operations. We're also recommending that the... We're also recommending that Route 5 be reconfigured. Right now, this is struggling a bit with on-time performance, that is, getting back to the transfer site. And what we're trying to do here is increase its efficiency, improve on-time performance, as well as get a little bit more coverage in this portion of the community. Right now, it loops back and basically goes back on itself. By going this way back in, we actually save some running time, and we open up some areas to transit service coverage that we currently don't have. Richard suggested or recommended in the staff report the discontinuance of interlining of Routes 1, 2, and 3. This is the practice of having a route come into the transfer location as Route 1 and leave as Route 2. It actually changes its operational designation. There's some reasons to do that. It typically is done in larger systems as a way to keep buses in motion. What we're finding is that that is creating some on-time performance problems. As one bus gets delayed, it then flips to the next route, and that route's delayed. So by discontinuing interline, we will isolate runtime and on-time performance problems and also allow the buses to catch up in subsequent routes. So it will actually improve the overall route efficiency system-wide. And then for fixed routes, we think there's some timing issues associated with the scheduling, and this happens over time as traffic patterns change, as traffic signals are re-timed or installed. The published schedule, if you will, of when buses are going to be at a specific time point can vary. You can see from this table, the on-time performance system-wide was 59 percent. That means that 59 percent of your buses arrive at a time point when the published schedule says they would be, or within three minutes of that. But you can see a fairly high number over here in terms of late. Some, not all, but some of the late arrivals are because of these slides in the time points, and we think as you publish your marketing material or republish it, you can adjust these time points and get your late percentage reduced. We had one recommendation with respect to Wine Country Express, and this came from some folks that needed to connect with the Breeze Bus to the Veterans Administration facilities in both Santa Maria and Santa Barbara. And by adjusting the morning run slightly, we were able to do some interconnect between those two services and actually provide for service between Lompoc and the Veterans Administration facilities. So that's a fairly minor change and actually would not cost any additional expense to the city on that one. We are suggesting that the timely replacement of your vehicles. While the fleet's in relatively good shape, it does run a lot of miles on an annual basis, and keeping up to date with your capital replacement program will actually, over time, ensure that your maintenance costs are managed effectively. The plan over the five years calls for purchasing of nine buses and two vans, so you can see that there's an ongoing replacement program that's called for, and we talk about that in the funding program of how to deliver that. With respect to demand response, again, we're reducing the demand response hours from 8 to 7 to correspond with the fixed route reduction. We are suggesting the reduction of overall vehicle hours through improved scheduling and trip planning and the use of fewer service vehicles. We think one of the things we came to conclude after we looked at all the data was that there were too many vehicles in service, given the demand that was out there. And then again, continuing your van replacement program. System-wide, we came up with a few recommendations. The first is to expand marketing efforts to increase ridership. We think the need to try to build back the riders is paramount over the next five years. And we think there's some help that the system identity could use through a more unified marketing campaign. You've obviously had a number of different pieces added to the basic Colt service over the last few years, Wine Country Express, for example. And I think some kind of system identity or umbrella will help the public understand how best to use that. We would also suggest that you spend some time over the next few months trying to finalize the development of and the construction of the Old Town Transit Center. I know a lot of preliminary work has gone into that already. The development of a well-designed and well-positioned transit center will actually, over time, save the operation money, improve reliability, and that will increase the public's use of the service by letting them know that there is going to be consistency and also a central point to go for information. Since we released the draft document, there's been a number of changes that have come about. This has been a fairly dynamic 60 days. As we've gotten more information, we've tried to keep abreast and update it. So what you have here is sort of a reconstruction of a table that's in the draft plan, and it looks at the fiscal years, ridership projections over those fiscal years. This part of the table, the fare revenue and local support component, has been augmented by the inclusion of Measure A, specialized transit funds that SB CAG has now released to the local jurisdictions to be used exclusively for demand response service, as well as some support that comes from Solvang and Buellton in their contractual arrangement with the city to operate those services. The change in this number results in a reduction of net costs, and then the operating costs that you see here reflect the service changes that are recommended in the plan that were summarized by Richard in the staff report, as well as the new contract that has been proposed as part of the request for proposal process. All of that is part of the overall concept of managing your costs over the next five years, trying to keep those as low as possible. Again, over here is the key driver for much of what's going on with the short-range transit plan, and that is, for years 2011, 2012, and 2013, we're going to be subject to the SB CAG requirement of 15 percent through the fare box. And you can see, in the first three years, we do make that. With the fares from the passengers and the augmentation to Measure A specialized transit funds, we do achieve the 15 percent required by SB CAG. Now, in 2014 and 2015, that 15 percent interim requirement goes away, and we revert back to the state requirement of 20 percent, and you can see that we come up a little bit short. So we are now looking at some options as far as where do we go with those two years. One would be to use some additional Measure A money to augment that, and you can see it's between $82,000 and $89,000 in order to get these two figures up to 20 percent. An alternative would be to look at fare increases, or perhaps ridership growth will bring it back to where it needs to be. But that's somewhat an evolving conversation that is ongoing as part of the plan. And then finally, if we are using the additional money from Measure A, along with the specialized transit funds and fares, we can achieve the 20 percent in the last two years and therefore meet the 20 percent state requirement. So with that, I know that's a lot of information and a lot of key points. I'd be happy to answer any questions or further discussion.
I'd like the motion to extend until midnight. So moved? Motion to extend.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Vote please.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I've got some additional handouts that are basically page inserts to substitute that reflects all this information, so...
Just had to do this because we're going to run out of clock time here.
No, that's fine.
And the vote on the move to extend to midnight passes 4-0 with 1 absent. And I'm sorry, who was the maker of the motion? And the second was... Okay, now back to you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to first point out that the PowerPoint and handouts are on the back table in the lobby for anyone that wants them. Again, we're looking for comments and direction for staff to come back with a final plan that includes mostly looking at Years 4 and 5, and whether policy would be to utilize Measure A, or cuts, or fare increases, or any of those other types of options that council may wish us to look at.
Okay, I'm sorry, who was lit up first?
Councilmember Starbuck.
I just had a quick question for you. During your presentation, you were very adamant about us moving forward on a downtown transit center, which has been before this council before. I'm just wondering why you're so opposed with the downtown transit center.
Well, the precise location is certainly up to you to evaluate what's best. I think there's some operational inefficiencies that we're seeing with the location of the current transfer site. It certainly is convenient, but it does represent a reach in some cases, and so what we're seeing is some of the runtime dynamics are affected by the location of the transfers. By perhaps bringing that more into the core part of the community, I think you'll see operational efficiencies. And then, in addition to that, the concept of establishing a hub that allows the transit service to build off of will, over time, build ridership confidence and will, again, help move back towards ridership growth.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding that the city of Lompoc is actually not required to provide public transportation. Is that correct?
You're governed really by state law, although there are federal laws involved here as well. The primary law that governs public transportation operation in California is called the Transportation Development Act. And that act says that there is a pool of funding available, and the funding is established in a hierarchical manner so that you can receive some funds for public transit purposes. And if any of those funds are not used for public transit, then they can go into streets and highways use. However, you can't pass it on to streets use until all of your unmet needs in transit have been met. And that's a function that SB CAG provides on an annual basis. So they determine if you have an unmet need. That unmet need has to be fulfilled using your transit funds first, then the remainder can be passed on through to streets. So the answer is yes. You don't have to provide for transit. However, if you don't, and SB CAG finds an unmet need, then you can't use any of that money for street purposes. So there's a fairly detailed organizational process that goes on there.
Okay, and thank you. And I was asking almost a rhetorical question, but anyway, so we're not required to, but if we were not providing public transportation, I believe Santa Barbara County would probably utilize the opportunity to provide public transportation here? Or the county would? Where I'm going with this...
Yeah, that would be... I don't know the answer to that because I don't know where...
Where I'm going with this is, what if we never reach that 20 percent fare box fee? What if we never reach that? What happens?
Again, going back to the state law, the Transportation Development Act law, there is a mechanism that's established in that law that two things can happen, one of which you've already pursued, and that is going to SB CAG and asking for either an interim fare box requirement or a permanent. And quite frankly, we've seen a lot of smaller cities go to both, and some use the interim as a way to rebuild, and others use a more permanent approach. If you don't go there and you're subject to the 20 percent but don't reach it, then there's a whole series of, for lack of a better term, it's a penalty, where you have to put in non-Transportation Development Act funds to make up the difference. Now, what we're seeing from most measure counties, that is, where you have a local sales tax, most agencies use that as the augmenter to get back to the 20 percent. So in your case, your Measure A money can be used through the local support mechanism to make up the difference. And that's currently what we're seeing as a trend throughout California. Alternatively, you look at fare increases or service reductions, but now this fare box ratio requirement starts driving your decisions, as you can see in the presentation tonight and the draft plan. Those decisions are starting to drive the service levels and the service decisions that you put out on the street.
Okay, because it almost... And don't get me wrong, I'm not against public transportation at all, but it almost seems like public transportation is a subsidy provided by the taxpayers. And if we do not provide it, and if we cannot afford to provide it, I would not want us to take it out of our sales tax revenue. So we're sort of in a... I guess if we don't reach that, we're in a dilemma. Do we continue to provide public transportation, or do we subsidize it? So I'm hoping your plan is successful.
Well, yeah, I think we all are, and I think we all realize that, and the team has had lengthy discussions about, much of this is associated with the economy. And as the economy comes back, some of these questions or these challenges start becoming smaller and a little bit easier to manage. So, I mean, I think one of the things we've concluded is this five-year plan is not going to be static. We're going to have to look at course corrections almost on a yearly basis to make sure that we're following the right path as we make those adjustments along the way. But I think it is a plan that does lead you towards the 20 percent and ultimately can get it there with the minimal amount of other revenue sources in order to make up the difference.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also just one last comment on that, because I do think the other comment that I'd like to make is about the 15 percent as an interim. There's nothing in state law that doesn't allow you to go to SB CAG and say, "We need that as a permanent." I would be happy to help that argument because, as we've gone into the analysis, there's some unique characteristics of Lompoc that are not consistent with big urbanized areas who can get to 20 percent fairly easy. There may be a real case for why a permanent 15 percent, or 16, or 17 is more reasonable right now, and in, you know, 20 or 30 years, as Lompoc gets bigger, maybe go back to the 20 percent. But that's another thing that I think you ought to reserve as part of your short-range plan to go back to SB CAG and say, you know, "We've done everything right, we've managed our costs, we've tried to increase ridership, but 20 percent's just not in the cards."
What's the fare box percentage?
What's the fare box percentage on the Wine Country Express?
It's currently about, just fares alone is somewhere in the eight or nine percent range.
What's the mileage interval for a bus replacement?
Depends on the bus. Larger coaches.
The large ones.
Yeah, we'll see million-mile buses in the large vehicles. The ones you're running typically, you know, 250 is sort of getting out there, 500 is probably when you definitely want to put them in storage.
And what did you project them at in this replacement cycle?
We were using the city standard, which would allow for about two vehicles a year to.
What's the mileage interval that they're at?
Oh, it's going to be about 300,000 by the time they're done.
From my personal experience, that's pretty low. With a well-maintained diesel vehicle in this weight range, they should go more like 500. And that might be a way to reduce some of our costs. You know, I was obviously part of this discussion at SB CAG when we talked about this. My goal in seeing this is that you would bring to me a plan that went up, not down, and that in the fourth year, it showed that we were going to get 20% or reasonably close to that rather than not getting it. And frankly, I couldn't support something that isn't moving in the right direction. I think you guys have done a good job of getting from where we were to somewhere in the right direction, but we haven't gotten there yet. Do you know on the Gold Route, if we were going to have a stop in the Wine Ghetto vicinity in that new layout, do you know offhand? Because we've had a lot of requests for that from the hotel group. And that route goes all the way around all the hotels and ends up over there.
Right. We haven't had any detailed discussion at the staff level on specific stop locations. That would be the next step in the process once the change is approved.
That might help us with the fare box too, if we've got a new crowd. With regard to the loss of riders, do you have a prior rider profile so you have any understanding of what class of riders we lost?
Generally commuters, combination of workers as well as students. The worker side of the equation, I think we all, you know, from the state's economy, we understand that. We're seeing a lot of students move with their parents as their parents lose a job and move, in some cases, out of state. And because students tend to ride four or five days a week, that can be sort of an exponential loss because they do represent, as we saw in the survey data, that core part of the ridership base.
So when you talk about students, you're talking about probably high school or junior high school students?
Generally speaking, yes.
Which would track the downturn in the school district's total enrollment, okay.
Yeah.
I was confused about the cut one hour, save 7%. What's the 7% of? It's not obviously 7% of the total or wouldn't even be talking about these things. Is it 7% of that route's cost?
7% of fixed route costs. Just the fixed route component versus Dial-A-Ride or Wine Country or Santa Barbara Shuttle. I mean, each of those was evaluated uniquely.
Okay, and this is for Richard. Richard, it seemed to me, from what I was told, that the reason we put in that 2A reverse route was to settle an unmet transit need litigation long, long ago. Do you have any rec, were you here back then?
Yes, one of the, a number of the changes we made are increases in service were made due to responses from a lawsuit that was filed and settled out of court. But because those requests came up yearly, we instituted the service changes probably prior to when we might normally do that.
And just in a general sense, how many percentage points would you say those cost us?
Well, the 2As cost us about 16%.
Yeah, but not, in terms of this fare box number where we're at 17 and we're trying to get to 20, how big a spread was that? Is that like a 1% kind of deal?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Okay, you know, for the first three years, we're at 17% fare box, 16, 16. If we hadn't had that 2A reverse route, would that have changed that number by 1%, 2%?
It's possible.
What's your guesstimate? And I'm not trying to stick you with this, I'm just trying to get it in my head. Do you think it's a one pointer maybe?
Probably.
Okay. So I guess what I would say is, you know, obviously some of the plans you guys made looked good and the changes you made looked good. And I'm happy with the 11, 12 result, and I'd like to see the 12, 13 and so on get better, not worse. And I don't know what to tell you. I'm not willing to put, and I understand the whole mechanism of putting it at the top and pushing the other out of the bottom, but I just don't view that as very ethical. So I don't know where to tell you to go. I just know we need to go somewhere and work on it and come up with a solution that gets us all the way there or a lot closer than 16%. If you got to the end and it was 19% and I took my hat in my hand and went down to SB CAG and said, please, can I have 19%, I wouldn't have too much trouble with that. But to go back and go, by the way, we can only get to 15, I'd have a lot of trouble with that. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I guess I'm having some difficulty with using the economy. I understand now, I thank you for clarifying, that middle school and high school students, we did see a reduction in ridership. However, usually, my assumption would be that with a downturn in the economy, you have fewer folks paying the high gas prices, and so you're going to get other folks who are going to ride the bus more often. So to me, that would almost seem like there should have been a balance there, but we had an extreme decrease in ridership. So I'm sure, I'm not sure, excuse me, I have a feeling that there's another variable in there possibly that may have reduced ridership that we're just not representing well enough? Or do we really think that this is the full picture of why the ridership has decreased so much over the past years?
Yeah, I would articulate it in three components. The first component is, as we suggested, the downturn of the economy, which translated into the loss of jobs and the loss of workers going to and from their place of employment. The second would be, in some cases, the loss of student riders who are, whose parents are transferring out of the district or out of the community. And those are double whammies because in essence, they ride, when you lose one rider, you lose basically 10 trips a week. I mean, think of it exponentially, it's one to 10 as a factor. And then last but not least is the change from the fare, the fare went to $1.25 a ride at the same time we had this economic stress. And so if you're choosing to ride, it's not you have to ride today, but you're choosing to go somewhere, that will take and cause people to maybe double up trips, not ride so often. And so it's the compounding of those three factors that we feel has resulted in that. Now, what has happened over the last four or five years is we finally got to a stable point, and we think we've sort of leveled off, but we haven't seen that coming back. And quite honestly, this is not unique to Lampoke. We see this almost in every transit operation in California right now, where they really have had a struggling with loss of riders, with the need to cut back service. So, you know, fairly typical of transit operators throughout the state right now, trying to deal with some unique circumstances that, you know, we all haven't seen in a long, long time.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess the way I thought about it, you know, would, the way I thought about it is if you have one class of individuals, and I don't mean class like social class, but I'm just saying, you know, one group of individuals that are unable to ride, the others maybe have stepped down because they're unable to drive or to do those current things. So it seemed like they would replace that, but apparently that's definitely not the case.
Yeah, we haven't seen that.
So thank you for the clarification. The other thing I wanted to bring up was in Chapter Seven, Page Two, and that is in regards to the capital plan. I did want to say that I really, really do appreciate including the idea of purchasing 10 new dual-fueled buses. So that's the diesel-electric, so it's really exciting. Oh, no, we're cutting that out, but it's still in there.
Yeah, and actually, in the handouts tonight, I apologize, there's so many new pieces of information. But in that handout, we do have a new Page Seven, Two. And that, you'll note, we did modify the procurement schedule. We reduced one of the vehicles in terms of numbers. And then after evaluating the dual-fuel hybrid concept, and to a certain degree, as the mayor suggested, looking at overall cost reductions, we are recommending that we don't go there because of the cost of those vehicles versus diesel is significant. So in an effort to try to reduce the overall capital cost for the five years, we're now suggesting, as you see in that handout, where those would be, go back to diesel.
And I'm, oh, well, that just took the wind out of my sails. I think that was very, very sad. Very sad.
It's an interesting phenomenon, and I think we all sort of, certainly in the industry, we've all sort of gone to hybrids and had the best hope for those, but the cost of those has gone through the roof. And I don't know if it's because everybody's trying to get them, but a diesel vehicle might run you somewhere just under 400,000 and a hybrid might run you $600,000. So the cost of these vehicles is getting to be a little bit prohibitive, and I think Lampoke is taking a second look, like many transit agencies, and saying, what's best for our dollar right now? And obviously, the diesel technology is rock solid and something that you've been running for years, so.
I'll have to do some more research because I, yeah, I need more, I need more expertise in this area because on the level of the individual consumer, that technology is getting cheaper and more accessible and more economically friendly. And so what you're having is the benefit essentially outweighing the cost because of the, you know, decrease in cost of fuel. And my assumption is that this was taken into consideration with the dual-fueled bus, you would be seeing some savings, but apparently not enough.
Some on the operational side as you get in the out-years and those deploy into the fleet, yeah, definitely fuel savings primarily. Maintenance, not so much. They typically will equal or exceed the maintenance cost of diesels. And while, you know, I realize I'm spending an entire evening giving you anomaly after anomaly and unique storm after unique storm, if you all recall, a couple of years ago, we had this blessing or curse of this huge surge of money from the federal government called the ERA funds. Well, ERA was also targeting transit operations and it was also about shelf-ready projects. Well, virtually the entire transit industry went after buses. And what did that do? It created a huge bubble in the bus industry and the prices went through the roof. So we're dealing with a price increase that's based on, you know, a lot of demand for those vehicles right now, so it's unfortunate.
Okay, so let me redirect that attention onto the vans. So I know that we're talking about procuring, what is it, three additional demand response pair of transit vans? Is that the total that we are still looking at?
Yeah, originally, we had in that first profile that you have in the document, in the bound document, one vehicle that was scheduled to go in fiscal 11, 12. And that one was not included in the actual budget, so we've dropped that out of the five-year plan, so we're going to go with two vehicles.
With one, that's a bus. Okay, so a total of two six-passenger vans.
Yeah, and the other.
The next five years.
Yeah, the other factor, of course, is that we're recommending reduction of demand-response service to match the actual ridership that we're getting out there. So we don't need quite as many vehicles in the fleet to meet that demand over the five-year period.
Now, can I ask if you've looked into hybrid vehicles for the vans?
We have not. I'm not sure if Richard has.
Yes, we will be looking into that.
Yay, I can smile again. Okay, well, let's hope for these two vehicles, the two vans, we can at least make some strides and get something that's fuel-efficient, hybrid something. I want to see something done there, so thank you. And the last comment I wanted to make in this first go-around, are you making fun of me?
No, I was just asking what type of vehicle you drive.
Mine is very fuel-efficient, four-cylinder, thank you. The last comment I wanted to make was in regards to something Mary Lynn had mentioned, and that is the Wine Ghetto stop. I know that as an individual in the wine industry, I've been getting a lot of feedback about having a stop near the Wine Ghetto and then also making the Wine Express. And I don't know much about it, and I probably should know more about all of its stops, to have stops along the way as well, to utilize that service. And again, what you're bringing in is more ridership. To me, that's really what that's going to do for you, is bring in more and a different kind of ridership that you're probably not used to. So I would hope that we look into that as definitely a possible way of, you know, increasing ridership and hopefully bringing us closer to that fare box.
The one thing we've talked about at the staff level is the potential, and we're still not sure because it's sort of the only place we can think of that there could be growth in ridership, and that's on Wine Country Express as the tourism starts looking for alternative ways of accessing that. And there might be some elasticity in the fare structure there that we can actually, you know, augment that a little bit and help maybe balance out the overall fare box ratio. So we are aware of that, and we are going to be looking with staff at options for trying to enhance that through the marketing program as well as stops, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. I think that right now they have wine tour buses, you know, and these are much, much more expensive than what you'd be paying for a local bus. And so it just makes sense to, you know, add the stops if we can, increase the ridership that way. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Just real quick, I'm going to ask a question now. This problem doesn't seem all that difficult. We'll use your Simpson Curtain Rule, so to speak here. When you raised fare box, you lost 20% ridership, but you gained a 34% increase in fare box. So if we were to go ahead and raise it another quarter and we lost another 20%, but we could maybe gain another 34% in fare box, which would put us at the ratio we're supposed to be. True?
Yeah, I think some of the loss in ridership happened before the fare increase. As I recall, the fare increase went in in late 2009.
I'm just looking at the 08, 09 version.
Right. So the fare increase went in in fiscal 9, 10, early '09, like October of '09, so the first part of that fiscal year. So much of the ridership loss had already taken place before we got there. But your point's well taken, and there's always this, you know, concept of the elasticity of a particular market and how much they'll actually bear within the context of paying for service.
What does it cost to ride the bus right now?
It varies from, oh, gosh.
Single ride is $1.25.
Single ride being you get on the bus and it takes you somewhere and you get off, or you transfer and get to wherever.
Right.
You know, so is $1.50 to outlandish? If we lose 20%, but we gain 34?
Yeah, not outlandish, but then, you know, there's that question of how much service do you want to have, how much ridership do you want to have versus the requirement for the 20%? So I think.
Well, the motivation here is for us to meet the 25%, so whatever we would have to do to meet the 20%.
Right.
Okay.
I was just looking back, I asked you a minute ago about the Wine Country Express and referring to Page Two dash 21. It indicates there that we have a 21% fare box revenue on that one already?
Yeah, I apologize. The eight was the overall fixed route.
Would you, would you comment on, what's the fleet miles per year? Do you know how many miles per year this fleet runs?
No, I don't.
Okay. And do you, could you estimate roughly how many miles we're going to reduce per year with the route changes that you think? Is it like 2%, 5%? Taking off the last hour and taking out the one route or changing the one route and taking off the reverse route, is that a substantial impact on miles? You could pull a number out of the air.
Yeah, no, I think service mile reduction is going to be somewhere in the 20% range.
Think it's that much?
Yeah.
That would be a big spread on your bus-
For fixed route in town. Now, system-wide, no, that's going to be less than that, but-
Yeah. Well, I was just looking at the replacement rate for large buses, which is obviously your large cost. Councilmember Costa?
Just point of clarification, and, you know, I don't want to drive the minutia too far tonight, but the capital costs are not associated with the fare box ratio calculation. It's only operating, so capital for state law purposes is handled separately.
It's still money.
It's still money, and I don't want to downplay that. I just want to make sure that-
It's just a different problem.
The context of viewing capital versus operating is out there.
Right. Okay, Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. In response to Councilmember Starbucks's comments, I think that fare box ratio is an important piece, but it's not the only piece. I mean, you know, what it comes down to is, you know, do we want people riding the buses at all? What's the purpose of having a transit system if it's too expensive, or, you know, you have such a limited ridership that, you know, it's essentially not needed? So, I think that, you know, increasing fares is one way to do it, but my hope is, is we can find other solutions and keep up ridership as much as possible, if not increase it. So, I think that's a good point, though. I think that there needs to be, you know, an update. As you're saying, there will be in a year from now about, you know, where we are with fare box ratio, where we're going, and how to really get to that 20%. And then, so the last thing I wanted to bring back up really quickly because of the statement you just made, because capital expenses are not, do not affect fare box ratio, the decision to go with non-dual-fuel buses was because we didn't have the capital funds to purchase it, or we simply wanted to go a cheaper route?
I think that the ability to deliver those was somewhat questionable, given the funding stream we currently have in front of us. And so, I think the answer is yes, it was motivated by trying to bring enough capital, enough vehicles to play over the five years within the confines of the capital you have available, so.
Okay, so then, that's another thing I would like to say, you know, again, as this is a fluid document, and a year from now, let's review that again, and let's see where we are. Let's see if it's still a possibility on the purview, and, you know, let's talk more about those buses as well, excuse me, the vans as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess my last question would be, you know, in a perfect world, would you do the routes differently? Is there a better route structure that would? I think what I heard people who ride the bus say was the reliability issue that you talked about because of the way, the sequencing. And the other comment that they made was that we had two routes that basically ran back and forth on the same street.
Yeah, and that was, that was one of the motivators behind the suggestion of modifying Route 5 was because there is some duality going on with one of the other routes on some of that service. I think the answer to the first question was, you know, would we do it differently, or is there a better way? Much of these things evolve over time, and some of it has to do with how the city learns, the community learns, how to ride transit. And so, what you have before you is really an amalgam of, you know, a number of years of transit operation within the community. I think there's no reason at this stage to do a radical surgery on the system, but there are ways to evolve the system from where it is today to where it needs to be over the next five or 10 years. And I think much of what Richard's recommended in the staff report for the next year is a good first step for realigning it and getting it prepared to do the kinds of things that folks are going to want in the next five years. I think as time goes on and we see a more normal California, the answer of what the next route service ought to look like is going to be pretty obvious to everybody once we get there.
I guess the one thing I would say is, I really can't in my head get a 28% drop in ridership tied to the economy, and the things that are running through my mind are, I know how many students we lost in the Unified School District, and I know what the unemployment rate went from and to, and I think there's another explanation that we're missing. I don't know what it is, but I think we're missing it, and I would surely like to find it and perhaps what's the solution. And the other thing that might save our hide would be the Saturday use for the wine tourists. And that Gold Route has the potential to basically hit almost everything. If we got a stop in at the Wine Ghetto, and they wouldn't have to stop at 10 places, they could go into the cul-de-sac and stop, and you can walk from there to anywhere. So, they wouldn't have to go very far off the route, a quarter of a block.
You bet.
And I think that might help you a lot. Okay, are there any other thoughts from the council before we go for a public comment? Okay, we'll take a second and go to public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is a moment for those of you who are still here, all 200 of you, to come up and comment on this. Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment and come back. I think what you're asking for is a direction from us, Richard. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
Yes, on two things. One, most importantly, that you approved the service changes that we proposed for the first year, so we can get those started. The sooner we start those, the sooner we'll have a year's worth of data to come back and show you a later date, and then direct us to come back with a final plan at some point.
I think that what you guys have done so far has been really good, and we've obviously just about doubled what our fare box was through the changes that you made and some providential things that happened in the contract, so that's all good, and I'm comfortable with that. I just don't want us to sit back and not be working our way forward and trying to, I mean, my goal would be to pick up a point and a half a year, and then by the time we get to the end, it's pretty well solved, so.
Yes, I think one of our goals is primarily to do the efficiency and effectiveness route before we go to fare increases, so we see what those actually come to, and before we recommend going further.
Yeah, and I'm with Councilmember Costa. I really don't want to go to a fare increase. I mean, I would do that if we had to do that, but I would hope we could find some other things through marketing and advertising and fleet mile reductions. And I realize when you make as many changes as you've made in this, you don't know what the actual bottom line difference is going to be, so. I would ask each council member to give Richard their comments for item C, please. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just, I want some clarifications really quickly. The final plan will be in the coming weeks, correct? Or will that be in the coming weeks or coming months?
A little longer, maybe.
Probably a month or two.
Okay.
As soon as we come up with the options for you.
Certainly. So, I'm, I think that, as Mary Lynn mentioned, you know, there's so many changes that will be made, and I definitely want to authorize those and see where we are once those are implemented. And so, for me, I'm more concerned about you and staff coming back in a year from now, so we can discuss where fare box is at. And as I mentioned, please, if we could discuss the dual-fuel buses one more time in a year from now to see where we're at, as well as the van, the, any kind of fuel-efficient van. That's really was going to be my comments. I mean, there's, I really appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. I really thank the consultant for staying here so late this evening and coming and doing so well and explaining all of this. But I would really like to see where this first bunch of changes goes at this point. Thank you.
Richard, in the big scheme of things, would four-months data be substantial enough to draw conclusions on?
I would think that because it's summer months and school's not in session-
Be skewed.
-that this next four months is probably not going to give us a real good idea. We probably need to get through, you know, preferably a year, because every single season changes for our ridership demand. And with school's out and then it's back in, and then you have holidays in winter, a year's time would really be preferable to get a big picture.
Okay, Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would be leery about increasing fees, but I'd like to see, when you come back, just an example of what a mild minimal fee increase would look like if we did it. But I really believe the most important impact would be the cost containment, and I agree with Mary Lynn, I believe the 300,000, 500,000 miles on those buses is probably, I believe we could extend those and save a little bit to the bottom line. So, I'd like to see extending the life of the buses by X number of years to lower the expenses.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, since we're not going to change more for a ride, I guess that we should implement the recommendation and other operational changes to the transit system, Richard. I would go along with council and say that a year evaluation would probably be the best to do.
Councilmember Costa for the final bite.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I know I've already said this, but I just want to say this because we're making our comments now at the end about the wine stops. I would like to see that in the final plan, so before this next year update, to have a plan in place to put stops definitely next or into the Wine Ghetto, and also possibly along in the afternoon on a Saturday and on a Sunday, a few stops on the way to Buellton solving. Thank you.
Richard, the Gold Route, you're going to implement the Gold Route. It's just a matter of implementing the stops on it in the final plan, correct?
Right. It'll take some time to do that, because we'll all also have to do the timing of it.
And you feel comfortable that these changes are going to get our on-time index up?
Yes.
I think that's everything for me. So, I would entertain a motion, I'll just do it myself, receive the presentation on the short-range transit plan, approve the first-year recommendations contained in the short-range plan, authorize the Aviation Transportation Administrator to implement the recommendations and other operational changes to the transit plan, and return to the council in a year. Uh-oh, Larry's coming over. I think he, I think I might not have phrased that right. Tell me how to rephrase that, Larry.
No, we want to come back in, say, a month to two with the final plan, short-range transit plan. You need to adopt it, so it's in place.
The final for one year?
Mm-hmm. And then, a year from then, say, next October, after we have a year's worth of data, we'll come back and show you how we're doing and further our plan. Do we need a fare increase? What are we going to do next? So, we'll bring the final plan back in two months.
I move what Larry said.
That will be the consent calendar I'm assuming.
Maybe not. Bob, are you okay with that? Okay, so I hereby amend my motion to what Larry said. And Bob Menz is second, and Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I mentioned that I would like the wine stops included in the final plan that will be coming back in a few months. Is that a possibility? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, and is there any further discussion on this? Joe looks like he wants to say something. Do you want to say something, Joe? Oh, okay. Okay, seeing no further discussion, can we vote, please? And what Larry said passes 4-0 with one absent. And now, we'll move on to item 15. Finding of hardship begin transit service under new contract while staff proceeds with award protest. And we're back with Richard.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The recommendation before you is to determine that the failure to implement the contract with STORE Transit Systems awarded by the City Council on May 17th will cause undue hardship to the city. Secondly, authorize the Aviation Transportation Administrator to issue a notice to proceed to STORE Transit Systems for all contract services beginning July 1. At this meeting of May 17th, council awarded a contract for transit system operation services to STORE Transit Systems. Procurement was conducted according to request for proposal 11T101. The RFP was prepared according to guidance found in applicable FTA contracting documents. Transit services provided under the new contract start July 1, 2011. STORE Transit secured a temporary office location in Long Oak after the contract award in May and has been actively training to ensure an orderly and effective service transition. American Star Transportation is contractually obligated to provide full cooperation to Store Transit during this transition. On May 17th, Mr. Robert Dockerty submitted an award protest on behalf of American Star Transportation. A protest is being processed according to Appendix 7 Bid Protest Procedures, Section 8.3 included in the RFP. According to this section, protest must be based on the city's failure to adhere to its purchasing procedures and the city's failure to adhere to its procedures. Mr. Dockerty has completed process review level number one, which consisted of approximately three hours of testimony over two days in front of a protest review panel. Panel is made up of Arlene Pelzer of the City of Long Oak and Matt Dobertin of Santa Barbara County Public Works. Mr. Dockerty has indicated if he is dissatisfied with the results of protest level one, he will proceed to protest review level two, which is a reconsideration of the findings of the protest review panel by the city administrator. The time needed and allowed for the completion of protest level two could extend past the start date of the new contract period with STORE Transit. During the protest review period, Appendix 7 requires the new contract with STORE to be suspended unless the council determines that suspension would cause undue delay and/or hardship for the city. Factors to consider for the hardship determination include: American Star's contract ends on June 30. Renegotiating a temporary extension of the American Star contract during protest period after completion of the comprehensive RFP process and award will likely cause confusion for customers, American Star, and STORE staff, and may reduce reliability of COLT. Renegotiating a temporary extension of the American Star contract could potentially result in significant extra cost to the COLT budget. Renegotiation will be disruptive to the transition from American Star to STORE already underway, which may reduce COLT's reliability. Approximately 20,000 passengers per month rely on the transition COLT provides. Suspending the new contract with STORE will close COLT, would close COLT during the period of completion of the protest. With that closure, those customers relying on COLT will be left with no means of reasonable transportation. Conclusion, based on the foregoing staff recommends that city council determines suspending the contract with STORE will cause undue hardship on COLT's customers.
Okay, city attorney, could you comment on the process that we find ourselves in with this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the procedure that's outlined in the bid process, the RFP process that was described in the staff report, Appendix 7 establishes the bid protest procedures, and one of those steps is if a protest on the contract award has been filed, then unless the council makes a determination that there is a hardship, the contract automatically is suspended. So, the reason this is before you tonight is because of the hardships that have been described to you. The staff is recommending, and I concur with the recommendation, that the contract not be suspended, and you make the determination of the hardship. But again, it's up to you to make that determination.
Okay, and if at the end of the day, the appeal of the contract by American Star were to be upheld, where would we, how would we go, where would we move from there?
We would look at the terms of the contract with STORE and go forward with the termination of that contract.
And do we have the ability to do that?
Yes.
Okay. You're comfortable that we have that ability?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, Mr. Fernball, in the opening paragraph, number one, the last line says, "will cause undue hardship to the city," key word being "city," and then the conclusion, the last sentence says, "will cause undue hardship on COLT customers." Can you explain the difference between undue hardship to the city and undue hardship to COLT customers?
In this situation, they're interchangeable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Okay. Thank you. And now we'll open this up for public comment, who would like to speak.
Good evening, my name is Bob Doherty, American Star Transportation. Good evening, members of the council and mayor. American Star's position is that if the city council had been made aware of our timely protest on May 17th, they would have not executed the contract with store transportation until after the RFP protest procedures were completed. American Star is only asking that the city council file the required RFP procedures and suspend the contract with store. There is no cost to the city of Lompoc to suspend the implementation of the store contract at this time because their contract doesn't start to July 1st. And your attorney just stated that on a letter to us on June 13th, American Star did file a timely protest. We did have it on time. The council decided that they voted and they executed the contract, but we were on time, and that should have been the prevailing factor in this. Now, American Star, and we go on to factors considered for the hardships, American Star's contract ends on the 30th, but we've been operating for over 10 years, and it would be very easy to extend the contract in a matter of minutes. Renegotiating a contract extension of the American Star contract during the protest period will likely cause confusion for customers. American Star has been operating the COLT system for over 10 years and has never not provided service. All of American Star's current employees are providing the city of Lompoc Transit Service at this time and will continue to do so without a break in service. Our service to the city of Lompoc has never caused confusion for our customers. We will continue to operate at a high level of service during the extension period. There will be no reduction in reliability of the COLT service, you have our personal Renegotiating a temporary contract for American Star could potentially result in significant cost to COLT. American Star will operate our contract extension at our new hourly rate, which we proposed in our RFP proposal, of $35.90 an hour. Renegotiation will be disruptive to the transition for American Star to store and already been underway. There will be no reduction in reliability of the COLT service, you have our personal guarantee, and our 10-year history of successfully operating the current COLT transit system. The city of Lompoc Public Works Director, Larry Beam, so stated at the city council meeting in May 17. Approximately 20,000 passengers per month rely on transportation. These same passengers have relied on American Star's transportation for the last 10 years, and it will be nothing but the same or better service. Suspending the new contract with store would close COLT during the period of completion of the protest. I've never heard of anything like this. With that closure, those customers relying on COLT will be left with no means of reasonable transportation. If the Lompoc City Council extends the current American Star transportation contract, how will this close the COLT service during the completion of the project? Should the city of Lompoc staff choose to close the service on their own, the FTA historically steps in and provides a consulting management service to continue the service. The FTA recently assumed control of the South Lake Tahoe Transit District when they stopped operations in December or October of 2010 due to a lawsuit from MV Transportation. If the Lompoc City Council has been made aware of the timely protest filed by American Star on May 17th, the store transportation contract may never have been signed, and American Star's contract would have been extended at that time. Again, how will suspending the store contract cause undue hardship on COLT customers if the American Star transportation contract is extended and American Star continues to operate the COLT system as we have done for the past 10 years? I'm sorry, I'm out, I need water. We don't feel the city staff's interpretation of the RFP protest procedure supports their contention that by extending the contract with American Star will cause an undue hardship on the city. When a protest has been filed after the award of the contractor and prior to the resolution of the protest, the city will notify the contractor to suspend. Issuing a notice to proceed is in violation of the RFP procedure and may be the very issue that the FTA will use to review this entire process. Extending the American Star contract will be less disruptive to the employees. They'll be able to keep and retain their medical, their dental, their 401, their vacation, and their other benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject?
Mayor Lynn, councilmembers, I will be brief, as having had a career in transportation for many years, it is way past my bedtime. Store Transportation has been in the city of Lompoc, and we've established a temporary office since July 1. We've had staff here, we've conducted interviews for both American Star employees and other individuals in the community. We've in fact conducted 54 interviews in total so far. We've interviewed 25 of the American Star employees, have offer letters out to 17 of them, computers are arriving, software is ordered to arrive July 1. Negotiations for radio communications is underway. We are in full rotation, so to speak, to have a transition that starts July 1, and to change that or to misdirect that now would cause obviously a great deal of hardship for us, as everything is rotating towards a July 1 start. So we would hope that you would consider that. I don't see any employees here today either. Speaking on behalf of American Star, my communications with them are that they are looking forward to the transition. Obviously, they're going to have an increase of pay, better benefits under us, and they're looking for a new management and a new style of operating, as my communication with them suggests. So we would highly recommend that we go ahead with the transition, as our contract, having been signed for July 1, indicates, and are full in support of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and come back to the council. City Attorney, could you maybe speak to a couple of the points that were made in this document we received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. With regard to the timeliness of the protest, as the council understands, there are two protest procedures that Appendix 7 set up. There was a protest of the bids, if you will, and then there's a protest of the award of the contract. Mr. Doherty actually tried to file a protest under the first process, but that protest wasn't filed timely, because that has to be filed within three days of the closing, which is the latest date, three days of the closing of the receipt of the proposals. He did attempt to file under that process, but he didn't file it timely. He was informed of that, and he was told that he could file under the second step, which is file it after the contract is awarded, and that's what he did. Then, if you go further in Appendix 7, the issue of withholding the award, if the protest had timely been filed at the proposal closing date, then he's right, the entire process should have been put on hold. But however, because the protest was filed on the award of the contract, that's why we're here before you this evening, because the appendix says that if the protest is filed on the award of the contract, it's suspended unless the council makes the hardship determination.
Okay, so the action is automatic, and we would agree that it was a hardship and decide not to allow the automatic action to take place?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have a question for city attorney, I mean, excuse me, city administrator, I just...
Before we do that, I think we're up at that point again.
Move till 1:00. Be safe. Move till 1:00, be safe.
Yeah. I'd accept a motion to extend till 1:00.
I move we extend the meeting till 1:00.
And it's been moved by Councilmember Starbuck to extend to 1:00, and I would accept a second.
A second.
And is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, could we vote? And that passes 4-0 with one absent. And now, I'm sorry, you can continue, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for our city administrator. The level 2, which you are going to be doing approximately, how much time, when do you expect to do it, and how, what's the process?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Actually, we don't know what will happen unless the bill is filed, and the procedural aspects, I would suggest it's probably better to ask me the procedural question, because it hasn't been presented to the city administrator yet.
Okay.
So I would think that it will take at least two or three weeks just to get the group together to meet, because the process that needs to be filed is, the city administrator has to meet with Mr. Doherty and whoever he wants to have representing him, and the review panel that was constituted to do the first step of the protest, plus the city's representatives would also be at that hearing. So just because of so many people, I'm guessing it's going to take a while to get those people to be able to get into a room together. And then, it probably wouldn't take more than a couple of days at the most for the action, for the hearing to be held, I'm going to call it a hearing, the hearing to be held, and then for a determination to be made after that hearing. So I would say a month's time?
That was my point, I mean, it's impossible to have this all take place before July 1.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I'm not sure who to ask this to, probably Mr. Penoni. If we were to temporarily extend the American Star contract, what does that mean exactly for the store contract? Is that suspended definitely, or is that something that can be, you know, for lack of a better term, put on hold until this process is complete and reevaluated at that time?
I would have to look at the store contract to see what the step we'd have to take to put that on hold, but we would have to rely on our authority based on the RFP procedure that store would be knowledgeable of, that suspension was going to happen unless a protest, unless a hardship finding was made. So relying on that, I would say that it will be in limbo for a while.
But, of course, as, I can't recall on the contract, because you saw it a few weeks ago, they then, the store at that point, would probably be allowed to, you know, repeal their side of the contract as well and walk away from it. Or, I'm sorry, is there something that says...
Not necessarily.
Okay. Because what I'm trying to figure out is if this is an option, if this is a viable option, to have a temporary extension with American Star and tell store, you know, while we go through this process, we want to stick with American Star, and then depending on the outcome, you know, there may be a chance that the contract with store will continue at that time.
I think that the reason that the hardship provision is set up is because it's recognized that it will be difficult for a contractor who is relying on a contract to do the things that the store representative explained to you are being done, to have them be in limbo for a length of time without really knowing what to do, expending funds without knowing whether or not those funds are going to be recouped, is not a practical solution. So although I think technically you could extend the American Star contract if the American Star was willing to do that, and if staff felt that there was an ability to do that without creating some confusion, and store was willing to be in limbo, then it could be practical.
Well, it's not whether or not they're willing to be, it's whether or not contractually they can be, or, you know what I mean, are able to be...
But it's both, because even if they contractually have to be, doesn't mean that we can hold a gun to their head and have them be sitting around, because they could choose that if they're not going to go, if they aren't sure they're going to go forward with the contract, they may end up looking for other things that they can use those resources for, and actually they'd have an obligation to do that, because they have to mitigate their damages if they feel there's a breach of contract. So one of the hardships is, which was discussed in terms of confusion, that's the confusion that's being laid out as one of the reasons for the need for the hardship determination.
Right, but I do see there's us as having three options. We suspend the contract with store, and we extend the American Star contract, or we accept the hardship determination and keep going with the store contract, or the third option, which is what I just brought up, which is the hope that you can extend the American Star contract, and as awful as it sounds, keep store in limbo until the process is concluded.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even though I sympathize with American Star, I believe the reason we are at this 11th hour, or 12th hour, as you put it, is unfortunately because they did not file a timely protest So I believe this is brought upon them and us by their failure to do so in a timely manner. It will be a hardship for store transportation if we suspend their contract. It will be, I believe, even though the list of things I, there will be hardship to the, when we say the city, I believe the customers would be taken care of, no matter who's providing it. I really believe that American Star or store will take care of the customers, but there will be a hardship to the city. Therefore, I am going to be supporting staff recommendations and going along with the, not suspending the contract and looking to proceed with the contract with store.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I'm trying to determine, who are we finding the hardship for? Us, the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I had a question for staff. I am not convinced, so please attempt to convince me, that suspending the new contract would close COLT during the period of completion of the protest. Can you tell me why that would be?
Well, if we could not come to a contract extension agreement with American Star, and you suspended the store contract, then there would be no provider.
Right, but it's clear with American Star here this evening in the document that they provided us, that they'd be willing to extend, although this isn't an official contractual document, I see that as a risk, but they're present today. present today.
What I understand, remember, Costa was saying is there wasn't a proposed offer. Whether or not that offer actually is something that would be transmitted into an extension, we don't know until the discussions that are being discussed.
Right, so I guess what I'm bringing up is that there is the threat of closure if you're unable to get the extension contract, but it appears as though that would be the difficult part here. I'm still having trouble. It seems like there is some hardship in doing it this way, especially because store has already invested a lot of time and energy and resources into this transition. And so what were the, right, in good faith, exactly. And so what were the thought of the other council members?
Go for it.
I think I'm going to go with the simplest right here. May 17th, we looked at bids, we looked at bids from several people, we awarded a contract. I don't know what else to say that would be simpler than we awarded it to store, American Star is protesting it. I don't see the validity in this.
Councilmember Starbuck, it's in a tech, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's in a technicality. I mean, I think that sometimes you can't oversimplify it. I mean, because if we just went by the simplest process, it would be that we actually suspend the contract with store. That's what happens automatically, but that's why we're looking at the hardship. So in the simplest form, actually, the store contract would be suspended. So we're taking an outside step. So that, it's based on a technicality, and that's what I just wanted to say. So what I'm hearing, then, I think I have the other two council members' opinion. Bob, did you already? Okay, thank you.
So, one day, this contract appeared on the mayor's desk, and I said to myself, if I sign this, I know this is just going to come right back and I'm going to be looking at this issue, and I said to the city attorney, so, what do I do now? And he said, well, the council voted for it, so sign it. So I guess I'm down to, I signed it and therefore I made the decision after an hour or so of thinking about it. And I feel for Bob, and it bothers me a lot, but we're about two-thirds of the way down the road. So I guess I'm going to, not very happily, go with the staff. You guys are both in a rotten spot, and I'm not very happy about the spot I'm in, but I guess I'll go with the staff recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that it will make you feel any less difficult with the spot you're in. However, you really didn't have any authority to not sign it.
Yeah.
If you hadn't signed it, I would have gone to the vice mayor and had the vice mayor sign it.
Yeah.
Because it was approved.
I know. But, you know, it's one of those things where you look at something and you know you're stepping in that proverbial bucket, and there's no other choice but to put your foot in it. And that's where I found myself then. Then, it worked out just exactly as I was afraid.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. One final question, which is that I know that there's still going to be processes that need to go through, that Mr. Doherty will be going through in the protest review, but at a certain point, I guess I don't really see what the end product is, what's the possible end product? Could we be even farther in a contract with store and have to repeal a contract?
Yes, that's true. If the determination ultimately is that there was a, actually, I'm going to take that back, it's not necessarily true. If the determination is that the protest was appropriate, then what would happen basically is we'd go through another request for proposal process. We'd sort of start over, which could end, and during that time, we'd still have a contract with store because it wasn't suspended, and so they'd be operating. And the end result of that may be the same place we are now, where store would be the successful proposer. If store wasn't a successful proposer, then it's going to be quite a thing to have to iron out. If, and, that all assumes that the end result is the protest is successful. If the protest is not successful and is overridden or not confirmed, then the next step would be for Mr. Doherty to decide whether or not he feels it should be pursued in court, and then that's the process we would follow. And my guess is by the time that court case was done, the five years of the contract would probably be met.
I see. So therein lies some of my issue, in that we could be in a worse spot we're in now, and I don't want to make this decision based on the assumption that, you know, the protest review isn't going to be in favor of American Star because we really don't know. You know, and if we did know, then that we shouldn't know, and that's really bad. However, with three members having made their decision, I am concerned, as I mentioned, about store putting in already so much time and resources. And for that reason, and in good faith, and for some of these other issues of the hardship, I will be in line with my other council members. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, you started this, so you can make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council has determined that the failure to implement the contract with store transportation systems awarded by the council on May 17th, 2011, will cause undue hardship to the city and authorize the Aviation Transportation Administration to issue a notice to proceed with store's transit systems for the contract services beginning on July 1st, 2011.
Hand a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Yeah, I have further discussion. I hate being in this position, but at the end of the day, we get paid to make a decision, so we're going to make one. That's my story. Any other comments? And please vote. And that passes four zero with one absent. Okay, we'll now be moving to item 16, the adoption of the Redevelopment Agency annual budget, presented by our redevelopment program coordinator. And, you know, like I told you guys, I started at 4:30 this morning, so Linda?
Honorable Chair and Board Members, staff is here tonight to present the agency's 2011 through 2012 budget. The redevelopment agency's activities this past year focused on committing and executing loan documents for housing set-aside funds to housing projects within the project area, processing payments and tracking agency costs for the Dick to East Community and Senior Center development, and the Aquatic Center dehumidification project, completing the design and receiving approval for the South G Street parking and storage facility lot across from Fire Station One, along with the demolition of a dilapidated housing structure previously on the site, and working with Cannon Engineering to accomplish the Old Town Seismic retrofit building assessment. Housing accomplishments for 2010-11 for the CHAFa HELP II funding, the agency was able to execute loan documents for $175,000 of the $375,000 committed CHAFa HELP II funds, assisting two projects owned by the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. The agency has $200,000 currently committed to Cypress Court Project, who is unable to execute loan documents until they obtain tax credit funding. This is anticipated for the spring of 2012 at this point. Set-aside funding accomplishments, the agency was able to execute loan documents on $1,625,000 in housing set-aside funding this past year. In addition to these executed loans, the agency will bring an additional $75,000 set-aside loan to the board tonight, or this morning, for consideration. The agency currently has $1.1 million obligated in set-aside funding, along with the $200,000 CHAFa funding to Cypress Court, who again has been unable to execute loan documents because they are unable to exercise their option to purchase the property until the tax credit funding comes in. This July will make their fourth attempt at obtaining these funds. The agency staff has focused much of its attention this past year on executing loan documents and expending housing money to affordable housing projects within the project area. These projects and loans are detailed in the agency's budget report. The agency's excess surplus condition reported in the agency's fiscal year 09-10 annual report of $1,43,981 should now be satisfied. With the agency's excess surplus condition satisfied, agency staff can now focus its attention on completing a first-time homebuyer program, revitalization programs for downtown, and updating the current agency commercial programs. Commercial funding this year, several business owners and property owners met with agency staff to inquire about redevelopment agency assistance for their Old Town commercial buildings. With the completion of the Old Town Building Assessment Reports, the agency and property owners should have the information necessary to begin to retrofit their properties. This will be a primary focus for agency staff this coming year. Fiscal year 10-11 has been an eventful year for the Legislature of California. Governor Brown has proposed to dissolve redevelopment agencies throughout California with the mission of yet again raiding local funds for state purposes in spite of the Prop 22 which passed last November to block the state from raiding local funds. The governor's budget for fiscal year 11-12 was passed by both the Senate and the Assembly with trailer bills that include SBX 114 and 15, and ABX 126 and 27. Bills 14 and 26 effectively eliminate redevelopment agencies, and bills 15 and 27 provide for an agency to continue to operate and function if the city has enacted an ordinance by November 1st of 2011. The content requirement of the ordinance has not yet been published. However, it apparently involves the host city or county making a commitment to make annual payments to a special state fund through the agency, tax increment monies. The actual payments will be issued by the State Department of Finance. However, yesterday, the California Redevelopment Association estimated these payments. Lompoc's initial payment would be approximately $1,174,937 in fiscal year 11-12. And the annual payment in fiscal year 12-13 is estimated at $276,456. Staff has an analysis of these two bills, along with a proposed press release for the mayor's approval that will be released tomorrow. Laura, can you pass this out, please? Although these trailer bills have passed both the Assembly and Senate because the governor has vetoed their proposed budget, these trailer bills have not been sent to the governor for approval. There's a thought that until such time as the budget is passed, these trailer bills cannot be signed into law. There are so many unknowns at this time, the agency has been forced to budget its funding without taking these proposed state raids into consideration. Until such time as they become law, the agency staff will continue to monitor the situation along with the finance director and our city attorney. When something concrete is decided, the agency staff may need to propose changes to the board to adjust its fiscal year's budget accordingly. The agency proposes to fund the following projects and programs utilizing bond proceeds and tax increment funding for fiscal year 11-12. Bond proceeds will fund the senior community center, will continue that at $3,290,000 carry over. Aquatic Center dehumidification rehab project will carry over $1.348 million, and Charlotte's Web will carry over $708,882. Tax increment funding will fund $900,000 to the seismic retrofit funding program, $225,000 to the civic auditorium rehab, $35,000 to the PAL program, in addition to the $708,000, $350,000 to the Charlotte's Web project, facade improvement, $450,000, downtown, oh, sorry, Old Town projects, $800,000, commercial rehab, $700,000, blight removal operations, $60,000, and historic preservation and restoration of downtown, $750,000. In total revenue, the total revenue in 2011-12 is approximately estimated at $15.9 million. Tax increment, bond funding, and other agency revenue this year is budgeted at approximately $12 million, with housing set-aside funding budgeted at approximately $3.9 million. The agency is currently holding a large amount of set-aside housing funding. However, the majorities of these funds are now being drawn and will be dispersed in 11-12. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the board for their leadership and commitment to revitalizing Lompoc and supporting redevelopment activities in our Old Town, as well as affordable housing projects in our community. Agency staff would also like to recognize Arlene Pelster, the deputy director of the agency, who will be leaving the city at the end of this month. Arlene has been through a lot with the agency over the last few years, and we would like to recognize her efforts on behalf of the agency and the agency staff. She will be missed, and I would like to say, on a personal note, what a pleasure it's Good luck, Arlene, on your new adventure in the city of solving. With that, staff recommends the Redevelopment Agency Board adopt Resolution 11, 147, which adopts the fiscal year 2011-2012 annual report. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Seeing nobody say anything, let's try for public comment. There's one person left in the back row. He's shaking his head no. I conclude that we will now close public comment and come back. I have one question, now that you sat down, but you can just talk from there. The earmark fund that we have for the Cypress, whatever it is, mental block, yeah, Cypress Court, that's been out there for how long now?
Almost two years now.
And how many times have they tried for a tax increment, for a tax credit?
The July round will be their fourth. One of the issues is that they're going against the Housing Authority, and they have made arrangements with the Housing Authority the last two rounds to not present the best application in order to allow them to fund, and they would fund subsequently. However, the Housing Authority has been skipped over now twice due to other projects where cities have cities have thrown all their money at one project in order to blow out the competition. So, the Housing Authority has just updated us and told us, if they do not receive the July round, they will go in for 4% tax credits. So, it looks like although Cypress Court will again submit an application in the July round, they will likely not be funded till probably the spring of 2012 round.
How much money is allocated to the Housing Authority for their efforts to get funded? They have an earmark too, if you will?
The Housing Authority has agency funding at 1.1 million, which we have executed documents just this month, in fact, a week ago. So, they are fully executed, and they are part of that million dollars.
How did we execute a document if they didn't get their tax funding? I'm confused.
Because they own the property. Whereas Cypress Court only has an option to, we haven't dispersed funds, but they have signed the loan agreements.
But they can't proceed unless they get the tax credit funding, correct?
They actually have proceeded. They've started construction. They can start with our money, and like I said, they will go in with the 4% if they're not successful in this round. Cypress Court's problem is they don't own the property, so we can't execute loan documents. And in order for us to satisfy our excess surplus, we have to have executed loan documents.
Okay, but the loan documents you completed with regard to the Housing Authority solve the excess surplus, or we still have that with the Cypress project?
I believe that we currently have satisfied our excess surplus.
So now we just have a million three committed that's going nowhere? Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I know it's in here somewhere, but I'm having trouble finding it. What are the outs, not the outstanding, but what are the fund balances that we have of money that's not been used in redevelopment agency?
For housing?
For, I guess, just sort of a general overview of the monies in each pot.
Are you talking about the unreserved funds that haven't been obligated to a program or project?
That would be it.
Okay. Currently, $199,837 in tax increment, and $16,738 in housing set-aside. Grand total, $216,000 unreserved.
Is that less than in previous years? It seems like, for some reason, I thought that there was more.
We're a little tight this year because of all the, because of all the money that we're budgeting towards downtown programs. Just because the money's budgeted doesn't mean that it will, in fact, all be spent in that way. Last year, we had $450,000 to the facade program, and nothing was spent. So, although those monies are available in those programs, they are also available for the council to move around if the need arises during, throughout the year.
So there's 218 on top of the budgeted amounts?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, I move that we, let's see, recommends the staff, adopt Resolution 11-147, adopting the fiscal year 2011, 2012 annual budget.
And a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Seeing no little green lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 4-0 with one absent. And now, I don't think we're gonna have to go to 2 o'clock. I think we're making, I think, don't we have to go to jail if I go to 2 o'clock? I think there's a rule about that. You know, go to my office, I guess, I don't know. Not the one here in City Hall. Okay, and now we will have item 17.
Honorable Chair and Board members, staff is present tonight to present a recommendation for the approval of a redevelopment loan for solar panel equipment to be installed at an affordable housing complex located at 513 through 519 North G Street. On February 17, 2010, the Home Based on G project was completed. The agency assisted this project with a $250,000 housing set-aside loan and an $800,000 CHAFA construction loan. The $800,000 CHAFA loan was paid in full on June 4, 2010. The $250,000 set-aside loan was scheduled to amortize over a 15-year period with a maturity of January 1, 2024. However, it was unexpectedly repaid to the agency on October 14, 2010, with the understanding that Santa Barbara Housing Assistance Corporation would be requesting this $75,000 in agency replacement funding for the purchase of a solar energy system for the project. The agency proposes to fund a $75,000 loan utilizing redevelopment housing set-aside funds. These funds will be provided at 3% interest for 20 years with monthly principal and interest payments. The subject loan will be secured by a UCC 1 fixture filing on the actual solar power equipment instead of the real property, due to the state's permanent financing requirements. This will be the first time the agency has collateralized a loan of this type. Staff recognizes that this type of loan does have a higher risk factor than a loan secured by real property. The potential depreciation of the solar equipment value may present a possible future undervaluation of the equipment and provide less security for the loan. Affordable housing projects are generally recognized as higher risk by nature and are usually done in order to preserve the viability of the project and provide a public service of producing affordable housing for the community. In order to minimize this risk, the agency has requested and received a guarantee by Santa Barbara Housing Assistance Corporation for this loan to cover this potential exposure. The loan will only cover 32% of the total system cost and will be the only loan obtained for the solar equipment purchase and installation. The agency has also shortened the loan term to 20 years versus the requested 25-year term, to assure the 20-year limited warranty will cover the equipment for the entire term of the loan. This project currently has 19 units, four extremely low, and 15 very low-income households, restricted by an agency affordability covenant, which will be extended to the maximum term allowed by the state permanent financing. Staff recommends the board approve a housing set-aside loan in the amount of $75,000 for the addition of a solar panel energy system to the complex. If approved, authorize the executive director or her designee to execute all documents required to execute the loans. This concludes my report, and Frank Thompson is here from Santa Barbara Housing Assistance Corporation, if there are any project questions for him. Thank you.
Frank, that roof was built for that originally, wasn't it? The cleat's already up there for this? Yeah, that's the thought. Okay, thanks. Wow. I don't know who got there first. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Thompson, on the fiscal impact, you will be, for the funding, you'll be, you're claiming $41,095 for the 30% federal tax credit. However, that's only on the Planet Solar portion of $136,000. Are you sure you cannot get 30% on the permits and overhead as well? I know when, like, when I had solar installed on my roof, it was total cost. I took 30% of that.
You know, we've looked into it. It's a little dicey in the sense that normally if you have one vendor, and that vendor bills you for the cost of the equipment plus the work of getting the permits and the design, then you can clearly include it. But when you've done the work yourself, that is, to design it and get the permits and so forth, which we've done here, then it gets to be a little more difficult.
So that $98,000 is actually work that you have done yourself? It's not, you haven't written a check for it?
Well, I'm trying to say that Santa Barbara Housing, as the general partner, has made all the arrangements to do it, and then you're in this position of actually paying yourself, it'd be like the homeowner taking time and billing time to go and make all the arrangements. It's a little dicey. We just want to be very conservative with this.
Who's next? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I have to say that at this time, it's funny to me that we're providing a loan for a project that will limit the income to our electric department. However, you gotta sacrifice sometimes for, you know, the betterment of the world, so to speak. So, I, you know, we know that they're good for it. They've repaid over $100,000 in loans. I'm not concerned with that at all. My one question would be, did we review the limited warranty? We did? Okay, because that would be my one concern, is the collateral issue here, and wondering if you were, if the agency was to shorten the loan term even shorter than 20 years, if that would limit the risk of the devaluation of the collateral even more. Obviously, that's better for us. I don't know if the agency would be able to pay the loan back in a shorter term than 20 years, and so that would be the one thing I would ask.
The agency looked at that extensively, and after review of the pro forma, they're, the project could not pencil at any shorter term. Trying to stay within the agency's debt ratio coverage of 1.15. We had to, we couldn't go any shorter. I really wanted the 15-year, but it just didn't work.
Okay, well, I mean, ultimately, like I said, I'm not too concerned about the eventual payback, and I'm glad that we did look over the limited warranty, and I, you know, I'm much better with 20 years than 25, so thank you for the work on that. And again, thank you so much for being here so late in the evening.
Thanks for your care.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Real quick, how long do solar panels last?
25 years now. That's why they have the limited warranty for 20 years. It's like tires, though, that if it wears out in the 18th year, you get two 20s of the value.
Gotcha. I just, it seems like this was kind of a done deal when I read this line up here, it says, "The loan was repaid with the understanding that Santa Barbara Housing would be requesting this $75,000." Was this true? I mean, it's really kind of like, you know, you go ahead and pay us early, and then we'll go ahead and give you this, so that's how I read that. And then, I mean, you know, we're kicking in another $50,000 on a rebate here, so I mean, it seems as though the agency and our rebate program are being pretty generous with it.
We're just nice guys and gals, that's always due it. That's it. I would just love to have someone make a motion. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I move that the redevelopment agency board approve a housing set-aside loan in the amount of $75,000 to the Santa Barbara Housing, what's the official? Housing Assistance Corporation. Solar Leasing Number One LLC, and authorize the executive director or her designee to execute all documents required to execute the loan.
And a second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion from the council? Seeing no lights, please vote. And that passes 4-0 with one absent. Arlene, don't leave, because I think we need to recognize you for, at your last council meeting, going for the marathon record. Have you ever been here later than this? How much later?
No. I lost it.
No, I just wanted to thank you for your, for your long, long perseverance tonight, and thank you. Now you can run away quick. Okay, and now we have written communications. This would be the last, no, we don't have any of those. Now we have oral communications. Chief, if anyone stands up, no, we don't have any of those. We have council, agency requests and reports. Okay, everybody report. Start from the right, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 9, I attended the Community Advisory Board meeting at the Vandenberg Air Force Base. We had a wonderful report on snowy plovers, and someday, when we have some time, I'll tell you that we will never get our beach back after that. Never.
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 Yeah, we'll tell you about it someday. On June 16, I attended an NCPA meeting in Portola, and if Mike Siminski's listening, he will know that that is a, about a 20, let's see, 20-some-hour round trip drive. So this is a lot of fun. No, it's better than that, it's 18 each way. No, it's 8 each way, 16-hour drive. Okay, thank you. 16-hour drive. It seemed like 20 hours. And then, as Mr. Humdahl reported earlier, on Saturday, there was a wonderful event out at the Clopepe estate that the Turducken's put on as a fundraiser for our libraries, and we raised approximately $18,000, $17,000. There'll be about $4,000 in expenses, so hopefully we'll be able to present a check to the library for somewhere around $12,000. So that was good.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Very briefly, I know that everybody's up watching the end of this meeting, but I did want to thank all the faith-based and the volunteer people that came out on the 11th. I was all over town that day, and I tell you, they did a real great job. They cleaned up Ryan Park, the parade route, everything was good. I wanted to call out a little of attention to some of the staff that, there was 300 volunteers, citizens, but the staff that stood out, and I did receive email from them, was Claudia Stein, Carol Hessen, Norm Flint, Cody Blay, Don Demming, and Larry Bean. So I wanted to make sure you guys got a shout-out on that, because it was a good job and a lot of work that day.
I went to meetings, they were good.
I'm pleased to report that I attended a mere 22 meetings. It was a light two-week period. Probably the funnest thing was going out twice, once to talk to all the leaders of that community-wide cleanup day, and once to go out and cheer on the folks that morning. And we also had, the city administrator and I had a meeting with the representative of the International Hot Rod Association, who came here to talk to the foundation committee working on the drag strip and present a lot of good information. And hey, all good things, another week of, another two weeks of good things. And therefore, we will now be adjourned to the regular meeting at 7:00 PM on July 5, 2011. Yeah. Thank you for your diligence, Butcher. Thank you for your diligence, Butcher.
I said I had meetings. They were good.